He just entered the meeting.
There he is.
You got saved.
Okay, we're good to go?
Yes, you're ready to go, I believe.
All right, where is, we got Patrick or others, Richard? Okay. All right, we'll call to order the Malibu Planning Commission adjourned regular meeting for September 8, 2021. Let me read my little script here. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Planning Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the Sign Up to Speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure that you visit malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The Recording Secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Okay, can we call the roll, please? Patricia?
Yeah. Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Wile.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a court.
Oh, gosh. For some reason... Alex, is there some way that I, when I checked in, I had audio, correct audio, but now I don't? And is there some way that I can address that?
What is incorrect about it?
It's coming out of my computer instead of coming out directly to a device that goes into my hearing aids.
So in the lower left where it says mute, on the upper right corner of that button, you'll see an up arrow. If you click that, you should be able to select the speaker and that'll be all your different output audio devices. Say something to you, can you hear me now?
Good, that fixed it.
Perfect. No problem.
Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I will move. I'll move the agenda as staff recommends. With items 4C and 4D, continue to a date uncertain.
Item 4A and 4C and also...
4C and 4D.
4C and 4D, continue to a date uncertain. All right. We have a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the idea is you want to continue the Malibu Inn matter for a reason, John, any particular reason?
Story polls and I got an email from indirectly that the city manager recommended it.
City manager recommended. Got any thoughts on that, Richard?
Sure, we did look into the story poll issue and Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have an engineer's review of them that states they were installed correctly with the exception. I think there were two polls, one that was in the area, give you more specifics, one in the middle of the building and one in, one of the four that make up the elevator shaft and they were approximately three to four inches off of what the plans were indicated. Other than that, the polls were per the plan. And once again, this was done by Chris Nelson surveying, so we have that. And the, as far as any other issues, I'm not aware of any other than there were some last minute changes that the applicant had wished to pursue and he was hoping the commission would vote to include those changes on the dais tonight. One of those changes was to install additional lifts for the purposes of greater public parking, is my understanding, and the second was for us to allow for outdoor music or amplified music. That would directly affect one of the findings and mitigation measures in the initial study. We advised the applicant that these changes, in our opinion as staff, are beyond what could be discussed this evening and would require this to basically return to our desks, go through and review it. The applicant stated that they were not going to pursue those changes once we mentioned that we would be recommending a continuance, so from staff's perspective, the project as noticed and what's on the paper, not what the applicant's asking for, that is ready for the commission's consideration, whether it be to approve or deny. Adrian, did I miss anything in that?
No, that's all, just I think, just to clarify, the city manager's suggestion that we may need to continue the item was prior to staff receiving an as-built story pool plan, so that came in after that. And we were able to confirm again what Richard just said, so based on that information, it is staff's opinion that the commission can actually review the project.
Okay, so let me ask you something, the the changes that the applicant was talking about have now been withdrawn and they're not being considered and then I've got to come back at some later time, so we'll have to deal with it piecemeal, is that correct?
They're not part of the project as it was reviewed in the initial study and as part of the staff report that's before you today. So if they wish to make any changes to that, that they have two options, one would be, again, to continue the item and allow us to properly assess those changes, or two, they can choose to come back at a later time and amend their application. We don't know if they're willing to pursue that at a later time, where, you know, those are just their options.
Yeah, okay. So, John, the motion dealt with continuing item items 4C and D, just to propose to you a friendly amendment to also continue item 4A to a date uncertain, item 5A to a September 20th, item 5B to September 20th, item 5C to October 4th, item 5D to October 4th, and item 5E to October 4th. Is that, was that the motion you intended to make?
That's what staff recommended, correct?
Yes, okay. All right, so discussion, great.
Yeah, just a comment on the polls, I think, I think, you know, we initially continued this so that we'd have ample opportunity for both us and the public to get a look at them, and I think the expectation is that we'd have at least 10 days, if not a couple of weeks. They were not viewable till Monday of this holiday weekend, and now it's Rosh Hashanah and other people can't go out, and I just, I feel like the whole point of having continued it has not been served. And then, secondly, I submitted a photograph of the polls that, to my eye and my mathematics, clearly shows that they are approximately nine to 10 feet short of what is required. I'd be happy to go through that now, I'm hearing that this is certified, but as I look at the map, at the math and at the photograph, I, I find that literally impossible to believe. So I, I, I think, I think, you know, there's several good reasons why we should step back and do this right.
Okay, David?
Yeah, I, I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the initial request, well, not request, the initial requirement from staff was they didn't need story polls. And we didn't say they had to, we recommended that they do it. So this isn't a requirement on their part, this is something that they're doing in response after they had been told essentially that they could go ahead without any story polls at all, so, you know, we're sort of, you know, punishing them for almost doing what we wanted them to do, but not quite, and then I, whether they're off by a few feet or not, looking at that cliff, you know exactly what's going to happen and what it's going to look like, and whether it's three feet more, two feet less, I think is not really relevant to what we're going to be discussing tonight.
Do comment. Yeah, first, the polls are required by code for the duration of the approval process. The only way there, there's a waiver of that is if the planning director decides there's no possibility, I'm quoting now, no possibility that there would be any scenic effects. Now, we're right here on scenic PCH, we're right at the ground zero with the pier in the state park and, and, you know, so that, I don't think you can say there's no possibility.
Can I just interrupt for one sec? I believe the prior planning director said exactly that. Richard, am I wrong?
She, she did say that, and I, and I would contest that as, as being just not, not viable. Secondly, it's not just about, about seeing how does it lay against the hillside and it's, it's about serving notice to the community that there's something going on here. And it's been up for literally two days. I think people need an opportunity to look at it and go, oh, what, there's another hotel, oh, this is not the same one as, I mean, I've gotten a lot of emails talking about what you're talking about Norm's Hotel again? No, it's not Norm's, it's, you know, I, I think the general community is just a, a little confused about what's going on, and, you know, a couple more weeks would be helpful.
The only, the only point I would make is, well, two, one, whether you agree with it or not, I think that was Bonnie or somebody else's determination that they didn't need to do it. So, I mean, you're saying she's wrong, but that's what she told them. Secondly, given the volume of comments we've already gotten, it's somewhat, I don't know what the right word would be, unlikely in my opinion, that we're going to get a lot more than we already have, and we know what the issues are, and we know how the community feels about it, so I, you know, I think we're just postponing something to postpone it. I don't think we're going to hear more negative criticism than we've already heard, but that's just my opinion.
John?
When Craig and I were visiting the site, I think it was yesterday, some people walked by who were Jewish and told us they'd like to comment, but it was holy days, there's apparently two kinds of holy days, one's two days, the one's one day. I, I don't understand all that stuff, but they weren't even allowed to email.
While.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a, you have a cord.
Oh, gosh. For some reason. Alex, is there some way that I, when I checked in, I had audio, correct audio, but now I don't. And is there some way that I can? Address that?
What is incorrect about it?
Uh, it's coming out of my computer instead of coming out directly to a device that goes into, into my hearing aids.
So in the lower left where it says mute on the upper right corner of that button, you'll see an up arrow. If you click that, you should be able to select the speaker. And that'll be all your different output audio devices. Say something to you. Can you hear me now?
Good, that it, that fixed.
Perfect. No problem.
Yeah. Uh, okay. So we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I will move. I'll move the agenda as staff recommends with items four C and four D continued to a date uncertain.
Uh, item four A and four C and also.
Four C and four D.
Four C and four D continued to a date uncertain. All right. Um, we have a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. So the idea is you want to continue the Malibu in matter for.
Correct.
A reason, John, any particular reason?
Uh, story polls and I got an email from. Uh, indirectly. Uh, that the city manager recommended it.
City manager. Um, got any thoughts on that, Richard?
Sure. We did look into the story poll issue and Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong. But we do have an engineer's review of them that states they were installed correctly with the exception. I think there were two polls, one that was in the area and give you more specifics, one in the middle of the building. And one in, one of the four that make up the elevator shaft, and they were approximately three to four inches. Off of what the plans were indicated. Other than that, the polls were per the plan. And once again, this was done by Chris Nelson surveying. So we have that. And. The, uh, as far as any other issues, I'm not aware of any other than there were some last minute changes. That the applicant had wished to, to pursue, and he was hoping the commission would vote, uh, to include those changes on the dais tonight. One of those changes was to install additional lifts. For the purposes of greater public parking is my understanding. And the second was for us to allow for outdoor no, uh, music or amplified music. Uh, that would directly affect one of the findings and mitigation measures in the initial study. Uh, we advised the applicant that these changes in our opinion as staff are beyond what could be discussed this evening. And would require this to basically, um, return to our desks, uh, go through and review it. The applicant stated that they were not going to pursue those changes. Once we mentioned that we would be recommending a continuance. So. Uh, from staff's perspective, uh, the project has noticed and what's on the paper, uh, not, uh, what the applicant's asking for. Uh, that is ready for the commission's consideration, whether it be to approve or deny. Uh, Adrian, did I miss anything in that?
No, I, that's all, um, just. I think, uh, just to clarify, the city manager's, uh, suggestion that we may. Need to continue the item was prior to staff receiving an as-built story pool plan. So that came in after that, um, and we were able to confirm again what Richard just said. Uh, so based on that information. Uh, it is, uh, staff's opinion that the commission can, uh, actually review the project.
Yeah. Okay. So let me ask you something. The. The, the changes that the applicant was talking about have now been withdrawn and they're not being considered and then I gotta come back at some later time. So we'll have to. Deal with it. Piecemeal. Is that correct? Or not correct?
Uh, they're not part of the project as, um, it was reviewed in the initial study and as part of the staff report that's, uh, before you today. So if they wish to make any changes to that, that. Yeah, they have two options. One would be again, to continue the item and allow us to properly assess, um, those changes or two. Uh, they can choose to come back at a later time and amend their application. We don't know if they're willing to pursue that. Um, at a later time, we're, you know, those are just their options.
Yeah, okay. So John, uh, the motion dealt with continuing item, uh. Items four C and D, uh, just to propose you, to you a friendly amendment to also continue. Item four A to a date uncertain, item five A to a September 20th, item five B. The September 20th, item five C to October 4th. Item five D to October 4th, and item five E to October 4th. Is that, was that the motion you intended to make?
That's what staff recommended, correct?
Uh, yes, okay. Um, all right. So, uh, discussion, Craig.
Yeah, just a comment on the polls. I think, I think, you know, we initially continued this. Uh, so that we'd have ample opportunity for, for both us and the public to get a look at them. And I think the expectation is that we'd have at least 10 days, if not a couple of weeks. Um, they were not viewable till Monday of this holiday weekend, and now it's Russia Shauna and other people can't go out. And. I just, I feel like the whole point of having continued it has not been served. And then secondly, um, I submitted a photograph, uh, of the polls that to my eye and my mathematics. Clearly shows that they are approximately nine to 10 feet short of what is required. I'd be happy to go through that. Now I'm hearing that this is certified. But as I look at the map, uh, at the math and at the photograph. Um, I, I find that, uh, literally impossible to believe. So I, 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 I think, I think, you know, there's several good reasons why we should step back and do this right.
Okay, David?
Yeah, I. I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the initial request, uh, well, not request, the initial requirement from staff was they didn't need story polls. And we didn't say they had to. We recommended that they do it. So this isn't a requirement on their part. This is something. That they're doing in response after they had been told essentially that they could go ahead without any story polls at all. So I, you know, we're sort of. You know, punishing them for almost doing what we wanted them to do, but not quite. And then. I, whether they're off by a few feet or not, looking at that cliff, you know exactly. What's going to happen and what it's going to look like, and whether it's three feet more, two feet less, I think is not really relevant to what we're going to be discussing tonight.
Do comment. Yeah. First, uh, the polls are required by code for the duration of the approval process. The only way there. The, there's a waiver of that is if the planning director decides there's no possibility, I'm quoting now, no possibility. That there would be any, uh, scenic effects. Now, we're right here on scenic PCH. We're right at the ground zero with the pier in the state park and. And, you know, so that I don't think you can say there's no possibility.
I believe, can I just interrupt for one sec? I believe the prior planning director said exactly that. Richard, am I wrong?
She, uh, she did say that and I, and I would contest that as, as being, uh, just not, not viable. Secondly. It's not just about, about seeing how does it lay against the hillside and it, it's, it's about serving notice to the community that there's something going on here. And it's been up for literally two days. I think people need an opportunity to look at it and go, oh. What, there's another hotel? Oh, this is not the same one as, I mean, I've gotten a lot of emails talking about. What you're talking about Norm's Hotel again? No, it's not norms. It's, you know, I, I think the, the general community is just. A, a, a little confused about what's going on and, and, you know, a couple more weeks would be helpful.
I, the only, the only point I would make is, well, two, one, whether you agree with it or not, I think that was Bonnie or somebody else's determination that they didn't need to do it. So I mean, you're saying she's wrong, but that's what she told them. Secondly, given the volume of comments we've already gotten. It's, uh, somewhat. I don't know what the right word would be unlikely, in my opinion, that we're going to get a lot more than we already have. And we know what the issues are and we know how the community feels about it. So I, you know, I think we're just postponing something to postpone it. I don't think we're going to hear more negative criticism than we've already heard, but that's just my opinion.
John.
When Craig and I were visiting the site, I think it was yesterday. Some people walked by who were Jewish and told us they liked to comment. But it was holy days. There's apparently two kinds of holy days. One's two days and one's one day. I, I don't understand all that stuff, but they weren't even allowed to email. So they were precluded from comment. The other point I should make is. The, we determine what's required, not some former planning commissioner who may or may not have determined this. Uh, and we had a, we had a meeting on this and we continued it so they would put up story polls. Now, when we make, uh, uh, continuance to put up story polls. The planning director, in my opinion. At that point, can't say, no, I won't do it. Okay? At that point, we are superior. Now you're the attorney, Jeff. I don't know.
I wasn't here.
Any circling this thing like crazy and, uh.
I mean, I'm a, I'm a big fan of kicking the can down the road, but, um, let, let me ask, uh, Richard. What our, uh, schedule looks like for the upcoming meeting?
Sure. The, the, the meeting you have on the 20th. And the meeting on the, the first one of October, they are both full. And you've got, uh, for, for example, uh, the two houses at the west end of Pacific Coast Highway, those PCH ones that are. Uh, the three, three, nine, eight and eight, six, which I expect to be large hearings. You're going to have those the first meeting in October. So if this were something you would like to bring back, I, I would advocate that it come back either at the second meeting in October. Or the first meeting in November. And something else that's coming up on your schedule to let you know is that you may be seeing, uh. If the council decides to modify the dark skies ordinance, um, at the, their meeting on the 27th. Uh, that item is going to have to come before the planning commission and, and it may be a really quick one. It could just be as simple as modification of dates. I'm not too sure what the council is going to. Direct us at this time, but we've got a, that's kind of going to be a, a council priority. That we have to go to the planning commission on. And the second item that we need to bring to your, uh, to you guys for review. Is we're going to be initiating a ZTA to our temporary use permit section, uh, because of a. A deadline coming up. So the farmer's market is only in our code allowed to use. The chili cookoff lot until January 1st, 2022. And so the, uh, hope, I guess at the time when that ordinance was passed. Was that the college would be, uh, have their app, their construction completed by that time and the lot returned to normal and the farmer's market. Can move back over and there's no way the college is going to be done in time. Uh, so we need to bring that to you. Probably in October, uh, early November, because we need to make sure we get that second reading done before the end of the year. Uh, so that we don't displace the farmer's market folks. So I would say that. Second meeting in October could be tight for you and November, though definitely open.
While we're on the subject, what happened to the ADU? We, we're going to have a special meeting on that, uh, this month or something? Where, where are we on that?
We are working on finalizing the changes to the report and yeah, that's going to come to you in October as well. Uh, we were hoping to have it to the, the commission at the end of this month, but, uh, with. Other meetings in the city calendar and, and sharing space here on Zoom, uh, it's going to have to be next month.
Okay. All right. Well, personally, I, you know. I, I know what the site looks like. Uh, uh, particularly driving from the south or the north, uh. My general feeling is that they, is the story polls are to give people an idea of. Uh, primarily about, you know, view impacts to them, um, rather than, than in general. I think that, that, um. And I think it's important that we can use our time wisely. So, uh, let's, let's take a vote on the, on.
I'd like to make one, one more comment.
Sure, sure, John.
Uh. We all know the chili cookoff was this last weekend. We all know the story polls weren't complete until at least Saturday afternoon.
Monday.
Maybe Monday. I, I, I would, I don't think any sane Malboite, other than somebody going to the chili cookoff. Would get on the road and go down to the pier on the weekend. And so I think this is very insufficient notice of the public. Uh, to view story polls when they get maybe one day, maybe two, if they happen to drive by. Um. It's just. You know, we, as I said, we have lawyers circling this whole thing. And notice is an important part of our job. Uh, public input's an important part of our job. And I would guess, I would guess that 90% of the speakers tonight. Were contacted by some group or some Facebook or something. They aren't the normal, they aren't people driving by and seeing story polls. Nobody knows what's going on. And so as, as far as I'm concerned, if we vote this down, if we don't continue it. Uh, that's going to get contested and, and it's, it's just a waste of our time and. We, we, we owe the public. This is all, this is basically a big deal. This is not a house. This is a big deal.
No, it is a big deal. I agree with you.
I, 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 I would say too, that, uh, I'm also not a fan of kicking the can down the road and so, and I think what we. Bargained for here was a couple of weeks of story polls and we didn't get that. So. I would, can we have a special meeting in a couple of weeks from now?
Oh, my God.
Well, I, I, I would, I, I.
How does that you feel, John?
I want to do this right. I want to do it right. I, I just don't think we've, we've got, we've got it right yet and, um. But I also don't want to make them wait another two months. So that, that would seem to.
It's been 11 years, 11 years, 11 years. Okay.
About it? What's 11 years?
Supposedly how long this has been being planned.
Oh. Um, all right. So we were going to have a special meeting, uh, to discuss the ADUs and then I told it, I'm told that that got canceled. Um. I, I don't have my calendar in front of me. Do we have a, do we have one of those months coming up where we have a. Uh, a break where we could shoehorn a special meeting in?
Patricia. I see you opened your mic.
Yeah.
And I know you were looking at special meetings. So I thought we should involve you in this because you're more familiar with the calendar than any of us, uh, with the other city events.
So the only, November has five Mondays, however, November, Monday, November 9th. I mean, 29th, excuse me, is the weekend after Thanksgiving. So.
I think they're looking for something this month, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, yeah.
I believe the problem we were having is that one of the commissioners was unable to attend. Uh, the special meeting dates that were. From a round for discussion.
Um, so we were looking, I think at 23, September 23, 24, something like that.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be gone then. I mean, I, I have, I have vacation plans then.
Uh huh.
And I have a hearing in, in Laguna Beach. City council hearing that night.
Okay. Well, we tried. Let's take a vote on John's motion.
Commissioner Martha.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Vice Chair Wild.
No.
Chair Jennings.
No.
This chairman.
Motion failed.
I can make a motion to. Uh. Improve the agenda as staff recommends with. Item four D heard before item four C. It's item four C states in the staff report. That is, that the, uh, four is contingent on four C.
So I was going to ask Richard the same question. Uh, is there any reason? To, not to switch the order of those two?
The, the main reason, uh, so I'll answer the question, uh, uh, Chair Jennings. So the, the main reason is that, um, we can't. Review four D before four C is approved. And, and the reason for that is. That there would be a variance that would be necessary for four D that they didn't apply for. Should, uh, for, uh, C not be approved. And that's due to the, the, the parking requirements. So they need, they need four C to be approved before, which further reduces their parking. Demand and then four D can, can go forward as proposed.
Comment?
Yeah, John.
We can always, and we have done in the past, make a contingent upon a Jupa being. Approved. We've done it many times. And, and it's just like making it a condition on the fire department approving it, um. Except it's a action by us. We've done it and it's.
That frankly seems to make more sense. Seems to make more sense to me. Is there any objection from Richard or Adrian about that, uh, doing it that way?
I don't have an objection of it. We were just trying to keep it a bit cleaner, but that's, we could put that in as, uh.
All right.
A condition of approval.
Okay. So let's vote on John. I'm sorry, David.
I, I, we, uh, since we defeated John's prior amendment, there is suggestion on the agenda, I don't, we have to go back and. Now have one that includes changing those two around and continuing all the ones that staff recommends being continued.
That, that's, that's what John did. Uh, he's, 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 he's approving the agenda as recommended by staff, which includes all of those.
Got it.
And, but switching the two around. So that's John's motion, right? Is there a second to John's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, David's second. Further discussion? If not, let's call a roll.
Commissioner Martha.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that concludes, oh, uh, need a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda was properly posted on August 31st, 2021.
All right, that concludes, uh, those items. We're now at item two A communications from the public. On matters which are within our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers, Patricia?
We do not have any speakers for this item.
Okay, we're now at item two B. I think it's two B, the one B. Um. This is for our staff and commissioners comments. Commissioners, comments. Two B. Anything? Nothing? Okay, staff.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. I'll be very brief. Uh, today, the California Coastal Commission held. Uh, the first day of three for their public hearing. And we had two items on their agenda. One was the hosted short-term, uh, rental LCPA we proposed. Staff did deem our LCPA complete on August 3rd. However, as Coastal Commission established, clarify. However, uh, they also put an item on the agenda we found about once it was found out about, once it was published. To extend, uh, their 90-day period to process the application now that it has been complete to one year. So the, we did, I did speak on it. I requested that they give us some sort of timeline and perhaps shorten that. However. Uh, the commission went with staff's one-year recommendation. And so the coastal commission did grant that one-year extension. For the processing of it. So now staff has until, uh, June 29th of 2022 to process our local coastal program amendment. The other item before today was for certification of our pesticides, uh, LCPA amendment, uh, just to certify it now that we had returned it with no changes. So that is complete. And our next step is we're going to be taking that to ZoRaces as directed by the city council. To start working on how that's going to be implemented, more like an ordinance, uh, within the city. Uh, those were the two topics we had today at the coastal commission agenda. And other than that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, questions? All right, hearing none. Let's move on. We've got, uh, we're at the consent calendar. Item, uh, we have one item on the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull it?
Hey, I'd like to pull it for a question.
Okay, John.
Uh, can you tell me the TDSF for the burnout and the TDSF for the new? Uh. Proposed structure, including the guest house.
Yes, just one moment. Let me pull it in. Sorry, just one more minute. Let me. Slowly. The total for the planning verification allowed for an in-kind, in-kind replacement plus 10% increase. The APR number 20003 allowed for an addition of the second floor for a total approved square footage for the whole property of 5,676 square feet.
That's the new one.
Correct.
What's the old one?
Okay.
The one that burned.
One moment. Hold on.
Are all permitted or whatever it is.
Yes. Let me find that one second. Before it was 4,643 square feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Sorry for the delay. I'm slowing.
That's more than 10%.
The PV added for that plus 10% and then the separate APR allowed for an additional square footage beyond 10%.
Okay, so, um, this is a received file. During, uh, nothing further, we'll move on. Um, it'll be received. Item four A is continued. Item four B is coastal development permit 21 dash 008. This is the, uh, application to construct median improvements on PCH between Webway and Puerto Canyon Road. We have a staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is for coastal development permit number 21008. For median improvements to widen the outside shoulder. For a distance approximately two miles along Pacific Coast Highway between Webway and Puerto Canyon Road. Next slide, please. This slide demonstrates a vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site and surrounding area. As previously mentioned, approximately two miles along PCH between Webway and Puerto Canyon Road. Next slide, please. The project description includes in the area south of John Tyler Drive. To narrow the median one to three feet to allow an inward shift of the travel lanes. In order to widen the outside shoulders to provide additional room for bicyclists to travel safety between parked cars and vehicles. Some additional improvements include median hardscape. Bicycle green refuge lanes. To reconstruct curb height. Modify signage and needed, as needed, and some drainage improvements. Next slide, please. I'm going to go through a series of slides that show the various improvements, um, along. Webway to Puerto Canyon. So here are the improvements between PCH and Webway. Next slide, please. Here are the improvements between PCH and Civic Center Way. Next slide, please. Improvements between PCH and Malibu Canyon Road. Next slide, please. Improvements along PCH and John Tyler Drive. Next slide, please. Further improvements along PCH. Next slide. An improvement along PCH and Puerto Canyon Road, ending the improvements. Next slide, please. Here's a pavement delineation detail. Next slide, please. And here are some site photographs that shows some of the existing median conditions along Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. And in summary, the proposed project meets all city codes and standards and staff recommends adopting resolution 2157. Approving CDP number 21008. Planning staff as well as public work staff is available to answer any of the commission's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, disclosures of, uh, ex parte communications, please, uh. See, John.
I figured I've driven it about 30,000 times. That's all I know.
Greg?
Maybe not that many.
Maybe not that many times. Yeah, I had some conversation with Rob DeBeau about it weeks ago. I looked at, I've looked at the collision study several times over the past few years. I found out that the Caltrans concern here comes from data prior to the collision study. I have some comments about that that maybe are better in the body of the discussion. Similarly, I spoke, was contacted by a resident who had some concerns that are different than anything we've seen here. Again, that might be best in the context of the discussion. And that's it.
Okay, David?
Conversations with Rob DeBeau, and I bike this stretch of PCH two to three times a week, and I know every nook and cranny that we're going to be discussing here. And this, I would pose this as a question, but I think it's a misnomer to refer to this as some kind of bicycle improvement project because it's not. I mean, maybe three or four percent of it is. It's much more about the, the sort of median reconfiguration in the middle of the road, and incidentally, there are minimal bicycle impacts to this.
Okay, we're looking for your disclosures right now, though. So that's, those are your observations?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I haven't.
Okay, Dennis?
I talked to Director DeBeau. Actually, I went in for something else. We just touched base on this. I have nothing new. It's not in the staff report.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing. Patricia, what have we got in the way of speakers?
We have one speaker, Ryan Embry.
One speaker?
Correct.
I'm sorry, say again?
Correct, we have one speaker.
All right, would you open?
Amazing. Amazing. May I have four minutes, please?
No, go ahead.
I, I have to say, I think the notice for this is improper. It doesn't say what it is on the posted agenda, and it only lists one address, and this is a project of tremendous length. Why you didn't list the other house address adjacent to Puerto Canyon, I can only guess, but that's inappropriate. It shows the project as being at two four two zero one point five PCH. And we've never we did the other project. It was properly noticed for the other median, so I don't see. Maybe I'm the only speaker because nobody knows what's going on here. I have three main things that I want to address, and it has mostly to do with lane widths because the right of way of PCH is not getting any bigger than it ever was. So it's an allocation, and the median and the mutification and the plantings is great. The median can be three feet wide, four feet, one foot, nine feet, whatever it needs to be, but I'm very concerned that I don't see in the meeting Caltrans, that I, I want to make sure that if the commissioners have any questions for Caltrans, that a traffic engineer representing the state of California is providing their statements and guarantees to the city in this meeting, and if not, I'd ask you to continue the item.
Thank you, Ryan. Your time is up.
I'm sorry, Patricia, I couldn't understand you.
Um, his time is up.
Oh, time is up. All right. Thank you, Ryan. There are no more speakers, you say?
No other speakers.
Well, it's not because nobody knew about it. That's all you. Okay, so let's close the public hearing. Come back to the commission table for comments, discussion.
Questions and stuff.
A motion at some point. Yes, Greg?
Yeah. So why is Caltrans not here? That seems like kind of a no brainer that they should be here. I guess that's for Jessica or Richard. And why is Rob not even here?
I think Rob is here, isn't he?
We have Troy Spade, who is the assistant deputy of director.
Hi, Troy.
And Troy can answer those questions for you about Caltrans.
Caltrans was originally scheduled and, and in attendance at the previous, the previous meeting that this, this was agendized and this me, this item was continued to the special meeting for the August twenty sixth that got continued to this meeting. So Caltrans was set up to, to be available for the August twenty sixth meeting. They were notified about this. I, I'm not sure why they're not here. We also expected that they be present, but they, if they're not on the meeting, they're not, they're not here.
Okay, because I, I wondered what, what are the city's opportunity costs here? I heard something about that this is costless because we're getting a grant, but it does still cost staff time. And I'm wondering if getting the grant for one project makes us less likely to get a grant for a different project later, and I'd like to know whether we have a strategy for getting the funds for things we truly need versus things where we're maybe just being opportunistic because somebody said, oh, here's some money for something.
So the, the grant is funded through Metro, and it, one, one grant doesn't preclude us from receiving other grants. Matter of fact, Metro has additional money for additional grants. We would just have to have the projects to, to be able to do it. There is, you know, other phases to, to this project that have already been, you know, talked about for future. So, you know, fixing medians, you know, on longer stretches on, on PCH is, is something that, that is up for consideration and, and grants would be certainly sought in those, those realms as well. So this, the grant money that we've received for this doesn't preclude us from, from grants on future phases.
All right, thank you.
So, John?
David was first, actually.
Okay, David?
Sure. Am I correct from my conversation with Rob? I believe he said that if we don't approve the, this six point four million within a certain limited period of time, that it goes away. I mean, we don't that it's, it's taken for this project or we lose it.
Yeah, the, the grant has been issued for this particular project. And this has been on the work plan and reviewed by council in the work plan for, for years. And this, the six point, whatever million of the grant, I think it was six point four, six point five million of that grant does include covering staff time. But the, it will expire. The grant will expire if we do not eventually do this project.
And
and it can't be reallocated for another project per se.
David? So, so the second part of that then is even if we, as a bicyclist and everyone else would feel, I think similarly, even if we wanted to do much more or make it better or do things to improve, you know, cyclists' rides on PCH, this isn't the vehicle for that. I mean, we can do that separately and pass something saying, you know, the planning commission recommends that we do all these wonderful things, but that would have no bearing on our approving this or not approving this.
Correct. Yeah, that, that, this is not the vehicle for doing those other requests or dreams to, to, to get other improvements across.
Thank you.
John? Let me ask you this. We always get here that it's somebody's been in the works for years and years and years, and now it's going to run out. When exactly does the grant expire?
You know, I, I don't know. Jorge, if you're on, if you could, if you happen to know when the grant expires, I, I know that we've already requested an extension on the funds once before.
Okay, and we can modify this, can't we? Did you design this or did this Caltrans design this?
Caltrans reviewed this. The, the, the city received the grant funds. We hired the consultant to do the design. And then Caltrans gets to review and approve and comment. So there, you know, all of the improvements that are on here are after years of deliberations with Caltrans to, to get what they've accepted on this project.
Okay, but nobody ever heard it to have the planning commission or the public give input on what we want. Is that right?
No, I, I disagree with that. The, the, this, this item has been heard in front of council, just not the CDP. So the, the approval for moving forward on, on this with this grant money has absolutely been discussed in, in public meetings before.
But that discussion was only about it was not the detail of the project. It was
It was absolutely the scope of this project.
Okay, now, is this part of Measure R money?
Yes.
Okay, so this comes out of our thirty million dollar allocation for Measure R. That's what our limit is.
I, I don't know.
You may say that we have six million dollars here, but we have thirty million dollars for Measure R. And if we don't get this, we can spend it somewhere else on Measure R. That's the way Measure R is written. Is that correct?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's, we have been allocated thirty million. And so that's why I'm wondering.
But I don't know that we're limited to that.
Not limited to thirty million. They can give us more, but we're guaranteed thirty million. Okay? So this would go against that thirty million. If we don't do it, we still have the six million.
John, I don't, I don't think that's correct. I think we
Absolutely correct.
Oh, well, if it's absolute. Dennis?
I'm just going to say, this is a specific task. It's the same task they already did from Corral up to Puerto. It's not like we haven't seen what they do. I make a motion to approve staff.
Well, I want to continue questioning, please.
You can continue questioning, but a motion's been made. I'll second the motion.
Okay. City Council on Monday is going to consider another Measure R project. Okay, it's optional. It's the Westwood Beach project. It's been in the works for years. But it's not been approved. Okay? And that, if that doesn't get approved by city council, we don't lose that five point three million. Now, I'm sure, I don't know if our attorneys familiar with Measure R, but it's in staff reports. It's in the paper. It was passed by the citizens. It's a gas tax. You get certain percentage of it for each city, and it's thirty million allocated to us. You can dispute that, but you can also Google it. Now, my problem with this project is that we have a finite amount of what we call grants, but they're, they're actually due to us. They can give us more money. But this is coming out of our allocation. And what are we getting for it? We have a hundred foot wide highway right of way. And we're using fifty four feet of it. Okay? And we're saying, okay, let's narrow the, the, the medians. And that'll, and make eleven foot lanes instead of twelve foot lanes, and that'll take care of it. Well, the real answer is to, is to grade and pave the right of way. So you can have a bike lane. We're, 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 we're moving medians that are five feet wide to make them three feet wide. And then we could just put another foot on either side and have a bike lane. But nobody ever considered a bike lane. And, and that's, that's, well, they may have considered and decided without
Go ahead, John.
Any weighing in, but we've had three people killed here. Okay, three in, in recent years on bikes. And it's not a big deal. Bike lanes, what? I mean, David probably knows, three feet wide? When you have sixty four, forty four feet to work with on either side, both sides, you can carve out two feet, three feet. And we're, this is going to be the last time we're going to touch this highway. And we have an opportunity to make it safer. That's the point. Not to provide parking. Nobody walks to the beach from there. We can get parking. We have forty four feet to get parking in. And we can amend this because we don't have to rubber stamp everything that comes to us. And there's two things I would like. I would like to have a bike lane and make these medians either a foot narrower or make the road a foot or two wider. And I'd also like to have the encroachments removed. We have all kinds of encroachments that we could just cut down. Bushes and stuff. We have wrecks at, at Puerto Canyon. We have two major T-bones there. One lady ended up being paralyzed, I believe, because you can't see. So I, I would like to have us send it back and just say, add a bike lane. You don't have to re-engineer everything. You make it two feet wider. The engineering is in the middle, not in the edges. You change the line, okay? And also require Caltrans to remove obstructions from the roadway.
Okay, John. Thank you. Dennis?
So Commissioner Maza, there is a huge amount of engineering that's going to take place on the sides of the road. You can't just throw asphalt on there. I don't care how many cars have driven over it. You're going to have to remove and recompact. And then you're going to have to do testing. You can't just lay, lay asphalt. It's just not that easy. You have to do work. You have to prep to do that. So this helps a little bit. I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm, I don't ride on that road. I'd never ride on that road. But it's, it's, it's a help. It's a start. And that, that's it. You can't, you just can't throw asphalt on the side of the road and think you're going to be able to get away with that. You can't.
To answer that, I think our
Just a second. We've got David's hand up.
Wait, David? Well, I don't want to cut John off. If you want to answer it, now I got a comment.
To answer that, we've got thirty million. We're spending fourteen point eight million to make our road faster by, by hooking up, synchronizing the lights. We're spending, we just spent six million on the prior widening. We spent six million here. Okay? That leaves us two million of our allocated safety measures for PCH. And we can't spend a little bit to recompact and grade a couple feet? It seems ridiculous.
Can I, can I just? Okay, I, I want to call the question, the subject, one comment here. I had, John, I agree with you a hundred percent. It would be great to have bike lanes on both sides. And, you know, world peace would be great, too, but that's not what we get the opportunity to vote on here. You, you know, we're voting on something specific. I had a conversation with Rob at great length about, do you have a priority list of projects and how do you pick this one over that one or whatever? It's a long, complicated story, and turning this down does us no good. It doesn't then lead to the bike lane money that you're talking about, and having ridden on this stretch of road, as you said, and I agree with you, other than the very first part of it between Civic Center Way and the turnoff for the shopping center, that's the only place where there are cars, and there's a huge, huge median on the north side of the road, and not a terrible one, except for right at the traffic light on the south side of the road. Other than that, going up to Puerto Canyon, there are no cars whatsoever. I counted because I knew this was coming. You find maybe six or eight cars between Webway and Puerto Canyon that are parked on PCH. So this is really a project looking for a purpose. It's a non-issue, and if it's going to add three percent of a safety factor for a cyclist, great, but turning it down just takes away the three percent and doesn't, doesn't get us closer to where we want to be.
I just want to remind you, very recently.
Let John finish and then I'll go.
Just want to remind you that no less than two months ago, we approved up to two hundred cars parking on the highway for ninety five events. Okay, so there are cars parked on the highway. The other point is, is, and I just want to refute one thing said. There was a study done, and Jeff knows this, he was probably on the city council, of safety on PCH. We paid a whole bunch of money for it. They came up with a priority list. This was not number one, number two, or number three, or number four. Number one was the Lost Flores intersection.
Let's, let's hear from
Troy wants to respond, I think.
You're from Troy.
Yeah. Yeah, this is where we bring up the council.
Where, where, where this was at on the priority list, I, I don't know exactly on that list, but this was a council priority, and it was, it was approved as such. So the, the scope of this was, was deliberated under, under council. They, they approved this as a priority project. It's been in the work plan and the, you know, going back to some of the other comments, the, the geometry of the right of way is not such that you could put continuous bike lanes all up and down the section. You'd have discontinuous, which would be an unsafe condition. And you don't have that, that much right of way. The, the, the widening of the shoulder does not allow for additional parking. It just allows for safer parking.
Right, what's a hundred feet?
Great. Come on, John. Craig, please. Come on, John. Craig, please.
Just for the record, I, I'm, I'm quite pro bicycle. I practically lived on my bike during law school in Seattle, but, um, here it's kind of impossible to do any errands on a bicycle from a canyon road. Um, I looked at the collision study. I looked at Caltrans history going back. I, I think part of the premise of this is, is misfounded in that the three bicycle fatalities that occurred in this area were not because the shoulder wasn't wide enough, but both of them because the shoulder was blocked by construction activity. And we tried to fix some of that in the approval of the synagogue thing. Um, and, uh, and I also should report that, um, one person I spoke to had an accident where she was driving west basically by Cosentino's. So just west where the median, west of the double turn lane where the median starts up again before Puerto. She was driving west. A large SUV came barreling out of the Cosentino's driveway. She swerved into the s- into the fast lane, was T-boned by the SUV and pushed up onto the median. Had the median been any narrower, she would have been pushed into oncoming traffic and might, might be dead by now. So the premise that it's, it's, it's safer for bicycles is sort of weak and, and, and yet we're, we're also now saying, let's make it slightly more dangerous for the, for the head-on factor. I guess Troy wants to interject something here before we continue.
Troy?
Yeah, so back to the, the priority. Um, I pulled the priority list. Uh, well, Jorge pulled it for me. Thank you. Um, the signal system improvements and the streetlight improvements and traffic signal synchronization were one and two, and the median construction was, uh, priority three.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so.
Come on, let's, let's move along, John.
To finish my thought here.
All right, finish your thought.
To me, this is, the project is either too much or not enough. It's not enough in that it, we could do something with bicycles if we got serious and did its little separator lane. It sounds like we're, there's no way we're going to do that. Um, so all the talk about bicycles is really nonavailing here. We're not going to change anybody's habit. We're not going to be responding to the city's climate change declaration. Um, but I think this does not make any improvements beyond the, the no action alternative or the, or the no build alternative that was proposed, which itself specifies repairing and smoothing and cleaning up of the existing shoulder. So I think if we just did that no build alternative and fixed up and cleaned up the shoulders at much less money, we get substantially the same result and we don't have the, the added potential danger of narrowing the, the median at the same time. So I, I, I think it's either too much or not enough and
Correct.
And, and I could propose a few other constructive ideas, but it sounds like those, there's just no room on the table for that.
John?
I just want to ask the city attorney. It seems that staff is telling us that we have no choice. We have to just approve it. And why is it before us? If we can't make suggestions or alterations? Because it makes no sense for staff to say, well, you gotta vote for it or you lose.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't hear it in staff. Troy, you can, you can interrupt me if, if I speak out of turn here. I, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear Troy say, you guys must approve this. Um, the, 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 the logic and, and kind of reasoning for this kind of, I'll, I'll say, specific project, what, what was laid out, that, that the commission always has discretion to, to deny it. Of course, you guys, this is, that's, that's a, a one thousand percent within your, your, your purview.
Do we have, uh, uh, for example, do we have the ability to say clean up the, uh, uh, obstructions in the median, on the, uh, shoulders?
I, that, that would likely be a, a, I mean, from, I guess from a, from a purely legal point of view, sure. Practically, I'm gonna have to defer to Troy on that, that if that is the recommendation, if that kills the project and that makes it, you know, unvi- not viable, then, then that, that's undoubtedly something that the commission should consider, yes.
Cleaning up the shoulders is part of the no build alternative. I, I could also suggest maybe we could put signage periodically that says, uh, no parking within four feet of the fog line. And then that way, and if there, if it's not wide enough to park there, you can't park there. If there is enough space to do that, then, then you've, you've, you've created a, a more the, the lane that you're trying to create.
If, if, you can't call the question, but I can, what I can do is to say, if you have a suggestion, if you want to offer an amendment to the, to the motion that's on the table, which is to approve staff recommendation, make your suggested amendment and we'll see if you've got.
I will.
Only way we're going to move forward on it.
I will offer a friendly amendment to include in the project the removal of obstructions and the rough grading of the shoulders were applicable, were feasible.
I think that's the no build alternative already.
Well, I'm adding it to, they want, I, I can see, as Jeff says, you can count. So I'm trying to, trying to make it a little safer for very little money. And, uh, we also have a lot of scofflaws along the highway that are blocking CUP mandated views uh, in the, the Caltrans properties.
Okay.
And, and making it dangerous for bicycles.
What I hear you offer is a friendly amendment. The question, Dennis, is do you accept John's proposed amendment?
Not.
No? Okay, I don't either. John, do you want to offer it as an amendment?
I offer it as an amendment.
Is there a second to John's amendment? Bails for one of a second. Are there other amendments you wish, any of you wish to offer?
Yes, if you, if, it, it looks like you've got three. I would require that everything, I'm not sure the right word for it, but that it gets a proper slurry coat or whatever the blacktop is because the sections they've done, like the Puerto to Corral slope is insanely unsafe right now with different textures of surface and you can see where the old, old dotted lines were and have been scratched out. And when you're coming down that at sunset, you can't even see where your lane is. They need to, they need to finish it with blacktop.
As I understand it, that's part of the project to, to move, to, to try to avoid all those discontinuous surfaces by putting a rubberized uh, surface on it. But Troy can answer that if he wants to. Um, is that, that, that's your, that's your amendment that you're offering? Uh, is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay, I, I won't. I'm the secondary of your motion and I won't accept it. So offered Craig as an amendment.
Uh, I, I, I offer it as an amendment.
Say it again? Let's, so that, so that, uh, Patrick can get it down?
That, um, that the surfaces be completed with a continuous black or, you know, continuous color coat as they have not been done on their improvements further to the west.
And then, it, uh, apologies, Chair Jennings, in Troy, and once again, I, I understand Commissioner Hill, you know, conceptually, what, what you're saying. I just want to make sure that that's, you know, what, 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 I guess. I- is that sufficient for your purposes, Troy? Or is there some better vernacular that, that we can use that it's clear?
Um, I mean, there, there are resurfacing uh, portions in the, in the project, uh, so you don't have, um, you know, a lot of the, the checkerboard look. Um, but I don't know that it goes the entire distance al- along the project is, is the recommendation that uh, that they, they implement full slurry or some sort of treatment because slurry on, on a highway like that is not going to last very long.
Yeah, well, so I guess part of the question is this from the section from the top of Puerto heading west, that's sketchy in that slope, and then there's a really bad one as you approach Escondido, just a little further on. I- i- is that, are they just simply not finished there and the, the plan is to come back in a year and do the whole stretch from Point Doom to Malibu Canyon or?
Cal, Caltrans does have a future project that they are doing more shoulder improvements. Um, and they're, I, I don't know exactly what, what they plan on coming back with on, on some of those areas. Um, keep in mind that PCH is absolutely a Caltrans right of way. Um, we are doing this, this project uh, for the benefit of Caltrans.
Let me ask you a question, Troy. Uh, on page five of fifteen of the staff report, it says, uh, part of the project description is to coal plane and overlay outside shoulders with rubberized hot mix asphalt RHMA dash G to close the existing gap at the joint between the PCC travel lanes and the right AC shoulders. And then overlay portions of the traveled way, including the outside shoulders with RHMA dash G. Is that what Commissioner Hill is talking about or is there?
No.
No.
No, the, the, the portions there on the shoulder that were, um, part of the project, um, uh, there, there may or may not be enough money in, in this project to do that. And Caltrans already has that, the, that shoulder work scoped in the project that they're doing, that they're following up right behind us. Uh, so if, if there's not enough money in this project to get that shoulder repaved, um, it will be done by Caltrans, uh, and Caltrans funds.
That's the no build alternative. It just, they're, they're basically going to fix it already. We don't need to do this.
Okay, so your, your, your motion then Craig is to, uh, is to amend uh, the staff, the, the staff recommendation to add putting some sort of coating to smooth out the, the, the uh, the structure of the shoulders, is that it?
Uh, it's so that the roadway and the shoulder, that the whole thing is visually con- continuous, so it doesn't look like a patchwork.
That's okay, that is.
The travel lanes, the travel lanes.
Travel lanes, yeah.
I see, the travel lanes. All right, is there a second to your motion?
Second.
Okay, uh.
Ask Troy a question?
Yes.
It's a very basic one. You see, the next project coming along is, is Caltrans is paying for it. Why are we paying for Caltrans' highway?
It's a grant.
No, it's a Measure R funding. And why are we paying for their highway?
We, we have commuters, we have residents that we care about their safety, and this was a priority project by council. So the, 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 the project as laid out uh, was something that, that our council had, had voted on, that it was a priority project.
Um, okay. Craig's motion's been moved and seconded, uh, for the discussion?
I, I'm sorry, I just don't, I still don't understand it. They, are you talking about the bicycle portion where we ride off to the right? To the right, off the right-hand side of the white line, so we're not in any lanes? Are you saying that all asphalt in that portion of the shoulder has to be consistent with the asphalt or whatever the surface is that is poured for the highway?
Uh, Dennis can explain. Go ahead, Dennis.
My, my, my thought here, uh, Vice Chair Wild is, is I've always thought that was not really good on the work that they did before between Puerto and Corral. I, to me, they, it was left unfinished. And I, I felt that when they did this work, they need to make sure the travel lanes are as new. I mean, you're, you're into the middle of the, the road. And I know that Troy, on his spec, uh, for their contract to doing the work, they have a specific spec or, you know, they laid out what the work they're going to do. But to me, that area that Commissioner Hill's talking about has never looked finished. And I'm sure for some, it's probably, you know, however you drive your car, whatever you have. But the point is, it needs to be done to look as new when you're done, period.
Now, I'm confused, and I think David is too. Are we talking about the travel lanes, the, the?
Yes.
Or are we talking about the side of the road where the bicyclists were?
Travel, travel lanes.
Just the travel.
The travel lanes. But also the areas that you're talking about are beyond where this project ends. You're talking about going down the hill to Malibu Seafood and Escondido Canyon.
That, that should have been done, and if that gets done later, that's fine. My, my thing is the work we're going to do now, let's make this section look as new. All of the travel lanes should look as new.
And my, my point is, I don't think this is worth doing, but if we're going to do it, then do it right.
And my question for Troy is, if we had adopt something like that, which isn't currently contemplated in the six point four million cost for this, how does it get paid for?
It's a good question. I don't know, because we uh, the engineer's estimate right now is already pushing us out of limit. So if there is, um, direction to go ahead and do something uh, that we do that, it may end up where we have to try to look at it in the annual pavement project, but we don't typically use, uh, annual pavement funds on, on PCH, on Caltrans right of way. Um, but the, uh, you know, the other, the other aspect of this is that not all of PCH is asphalt. You got, you have concrete surfaces.
Concrete sections, that's right.
And so it's, you have patchwork within different sections that you're not going to want to put slurry or some sort of other treatment over top of that to make it look seamless. There, there's, there's gonna be some patchwork left.
The patchwork doesn't matter from a, uh, moment to moment going forward sense. It matters in a lateral way when half the lane is asphalt and half the lane is concrete. And then there's maybe a section that's been scraped out to remove.
Okay, we've got Craig's motion. It's been seconded by Dennis. And you've got one more point, John. What is it?
Okay, just to David's edification. The reason one of the, one of the bicyclists was killed is because they hit the area between the roadway and the side where you say, uh, across the, uh, fog line, caught their wheel and flipped into traffic and got hit by a bus. And that's a, the danger of not fixing that part of the road. So we have one death attributed to that. Then that's why there's the difference between the roadway and the side.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Call the role. Come on, let's call the role on your amendment, all right, Craig?
Uh, well, question. Invariably, there are cost overruns. How does that affect the grant? Could we theoretically deplete the entire Measure R funds?
Yeah. I'm not sure who's that question.
That's for Troy, for Troy. How, what, how do you do with, what, what cost overruns?
I, I don't know. I mean, we're, we're at the mercy of, of Metro on that. If, if, we've already asked for two extensions on, on these funds for Metro. If we, uh, if we can't complete the project with what they've already granted, they may not authorize additional extensions and/or additional funds. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to your question, Craig. I'd actually have to, we'd have to go through the exercise with Metro and I don't know that we, we want to entertain that.
Okay, we're voting on Craig's, uh, amendment, proposed amendment. Does everybody understand that?
No. No, can you repeat it? Because it's been a while.
It, it's, uh, to, to make the travel lane surfaces as smooth and integral as reasonably possible by whatever coating technique is appropriate.
Okay, that's your, uh, understanding of the motion, Dennis?
Yes.
All right. Other questions? Can we call the roll, please?
We're just hearing on his, his amendment, right?
Just on his amendment, John, that's correct.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Martha?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild?
Yeah, yes.
Chair Jennings?
No. All right, we're now going to vote on the main motion, the main motion as amended. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Martha?
I can't put public safety against this, so no.
Vice Chair Wild?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great technique. You remember the motion.
I, I, I did it for the good of the team.
Yeah, I, yeah. Okay. That concludes item, uh, four D. We're now on to item four D. I'm going to do Malibu Inn first, right? And then we'll come back and, yeah, we're going to condition it if it passes. So four D, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, uh, good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, this item is for the construction of a seven thousand six hundred ninety-three square foot a twenty-room motel with a subterranean garage, surface parking lot area, rooftop deck, swimming pool, retaining walls, and a new septic system. Uh, this project was continued from the August, May seven, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-one Planning Commission meeting to, uh, story pool, the motel building story pools were installed on Saturday. This, uh, should be noted that the story pools, uh, had been previously waived, uh, because of public safety concerns since the parking lot provides required parking spaces for the Malibu Inn. Uh, and uh, the project was not anticipated to adversely affect scenic, uh, views since this stretch of PCH does not qualify as a scenic area or scenic view uh, pursuant to, um, land. Land use plan policy six point four. Uh, story pools are not required, uh, public noticing. And because they were waived, it was considered, um, that it was not a submittal requirement. Instead, the applicant provided photo simulations. Um, that are, uh, that were, um, included as attachment, uh. For of your, uh, staff report. Uh, stated by, um, Richard, uh, earlier in the meeting, staff, uh, recommends that the. Uh, applicants request to permit the optional cart lifts, uh, to be used as public parking. And for amplify sound, uh, on the rooftop deck, uh. To either be processed as an amendment, uh, you know, down the road or to continue this item to permit staff. Um, and city experts, uh, additional time to review potential traffic impacts. As a result of the additional public parking, as well as, um, our experts to review the noise study. Um, next slide, please. The subject property is currently a surface parking lot located immediately east of Malibu Inn. Uh, the parking lot is used to provide the, uh, necessary outside parking spaces for the Malibu Inn. As well as, uh, anywhere between seven and nine parking spaces are, uh, allowed to be. Uh, provided, uh, for public parking. Uh, next slide. The proposed. Project includes a fire department access. Uh, a one-way in and two-right, uh, turn out of the facility. Um, uh, staff is also conditioning the project to remove the next driveway approach, uh. To the west to improve onsite circulation safety. Uh, both access and parking will continue to be joined, uh, with the adjacent Malibu Inn. Uh, the applicant is proposing auto lifts, uh, within the garage to supplement the required parking spaces. And to, um, uh, you know, rest. Uh, infra spaces, um, again, uh, the request is to allow those for public parking, but again. Uh, per staff's recommendation, um, that should not be considered. Staff added a condition that requires the lifts to be used only as. Uh, spaces for the existing facility. Uh, this was done to, due to concerns about the code. Uh, that does not allow parking as a standalone use. And it would be, uh, difficult for code enforcement to regulate the proper, uh, appropriation of parking spaces. Um, as well as again, uh, the, uh, fact that staff did not analyze the additional. Uh, traffic impacts that would result, uh, from the lift spaces being used as public parking. Uh, it should be noted that the building's, um, projection into the slope is relatively. In between the Malibu Inn and buildings immediately to the east. Uh, next slide, please. The project includes a, you know, two levels above the garage. Each level is set back, uh, further from the street. And, uh, it's built into the hillside. The roof is proposed to be used as a private deck. With a pool, spa and bar, uh, to be used only by guests. Uh, the kitchen is also conditioned only to serve, serve, serve food and beverages to guests. And next slide. Um, these are the north and south elevation of the building, uh, next slide. Uh, this is the east elevation, um, of the building, uh, next slide. And this one shows the west elevation of the building. Um, and then the next slide. Uh, it shows a cross-section of the building. Uh, this cross-section shows where the, uh, natural grade is. And, uh, so the story pool height, uh, uh, that we see on, um. On site, uh, would just be story pools that project above that dash line on this cross-section. Um, uh, just because the majority of building is built in, uh, to the hillside. So even though the building, uh, may have a perceived height higher. Than, uh, what you see on the story pools, that's because the building is built into the hillside. Uh, next slide. So, uh, the next few slides, uh, include the photo simulations showing the proposed hotel building from various. Vantage points. Uh, this is a north view of the building from Pacific Coast Highway, uh, next slide. And again, this is another view, uh, of the, uh, proposed motel building from Pacific Coast Highway.
Hang on, can, can we clarify that last image? Did, was not that the previous?
Yeah.
The hotel, that's, that's a shopping plaza, right?
Yeah, that's the wrong slide.
Adrian?
Um. Uh, yeah, that, that is, I apologize, that is the wrong slide. Uh, the next three slides are, are correct, though. So I don't know how that got, um.
That might have looked pretty good.
Yeah. Um, well, it looked very similar to this project. Uh, the next slide. Is, uh, the view from, uh, Pacific Coast Highway. If we go to the next slide. Um, again, this is the motel, uh, from PCH, just, uh, from a, a different vantage point. Uh, next slide. And this is a view of the motel, uh, from the Malibu Pier, uh, next slide. And here is an east view of the, uh, story pools, um. And then we have on the next slide is a photograph that Commissioner, uh. Hill provided, um, also showing, um, the story pools from. Um, you know, facing the east. Uh, next slide. So, uh, the, um, code allows for up to a thousand cubic yards of non-exempt grading. Per acre of commercial development. Uh, which would allow one thousand eight hundred and eighty, uh, cubic yards of non-exempt grading for this project. Uh, the project totals, uh, an amount of. Uh, one thousand three hundred and forty-eight cubic yards of non-exempt grading. Uh, which exceeds the total allowed, um, and by one hundred and sixty-eight cubic yards. And so a variance is requested for that. Uh, the applicant also includes a variance for construction on slopes steeper than three to one. Um, the third variance is, uh, proposed to allow construction of the development of retaining wall. That is an integral part of the motel building in excess of twelve feet in height. Uh, the proposed development requires the construction of the retaining wall at the rear north side of the motel building. This retaining wall would be constructed to secure the graded, uh, slope, um, following the excavation. Uh, for this project and to provide a fifteen-foot structural setback, uh, from the slope to the building. Uh, the retaining wall, uh, from, uh, as measured from, uh, finish grade. Uh, will have a height of twenty-one feet, uh, ten inches. Um, uh, the retaining wall would extend above the finish grade to accommodate the subterranean parking level. And to provide an adequate, uh, foundation, uh, and the last, uh, variance, the fourth variance. Is a, uh, requirement, uh, for the, uh, surface parking spaces to. Project into the required front yard setback. Uh, the front yard setback is forty-seven feet, five inches. Um, uh, while the, uh, proposed, um. Parking spaces are just several feet, uh, away from the south property line. Uh, a variance is, is, is requested for that, uh, next slide. So the project in, uh, would include excavation into the, a steep hillside and. Limited, uh, potential to support cultural resources due to pass disturbance. To the side from construction of Pacific Coast Highway and the onsite parking lot. And due to the steep nature of the site's hillside. However, local, uh, tribal, uh, representatives expressed concerns, uh, during, uh, construction. And a mitigation, uh, measure, uh, uh, was added to the project. Um, that would, um, further reduce the, uh, impacts of, of the excavation. Um, also, a mitigation measure was added, uh, to the geology and soil section of the initial study. Over the potential discovery of, uh, paleontological resources. Uh, during excavation, a qualified, uh, paleontologist will be required to monitor all ground disturbing, uh, activities. And lastly, a mitigation was added, uh, to minimize noise over temporary construction and. Potentially, uh, excessive groundborne vibration or groundborne noise levels. As well as, uh, amplified music. Uh, the applicant has provided a noise study. That has not been evaluated by city experts, uh, and staff would recommend again. That, uh, the applicant, um, deal with. Uh, amplified music on the rooftop deck as a separate application. Uh, next slide. As conditioned and mitigated, as staff recommends that the approval of the proposed project, um. Uh, and the adoption of initial study and the MND, uh, this concludes my presentation. And staff is available to answer your questions.
Okay, uh, Expartee Communications, uh, David?
Yes, I met with the applicants, uh, and their architect, uh, about a week or so ago. And then previously when the project was first before us, but I didn't discuss anything that isn't already covered in the report.
And Dennis?
Uh, I too have seen Mr. Burge and Hakim, uh, at the, at the job site, couple of weeks ago, I guess now. Nothing new.
Craig?
Um, a couple of years ago, I've met with Doug Burge and Mikey over the conceptual design of this. Um, at the time, I expressed sort of a provisional view that the concept seemed okay. Although I did express concern about the high retaining wall and was surprised that it's still in the plan. Um, I've now recently had emails with staff in particular about the story polls. I met on site, uh, with John at the same time. I spoke with several representatives at Aviator Nation. Learned that it is a de facto event space. Um, they have events there that would require substantially more parking than anything we've talked about or is in their staff report. Uh, has substantially more seating than shown, including, uh, what they, in the staff report is calling the old billiard room. As the employee lounge is not that, it's configured as entertainment space with eighteen seats. Uh, it's indistinguishable from other areas. It's, it's just called the smiley room now. Um, and that there are more employees than stated, that the closed store alone had five employees working, including a guard. So, that's, that's my disclosure.
John?
Um, I too went with Craig to visit the site. And noted the, the height at seventy feet. It didn't look seventy feet to me. But, um, that's what the staff says. Uh, I, we talked, Craig and I talked to. The lady who runs the school next door, I think her name is Sarah or Sonia. Do you remember, Craig?
Sarah.
Sarah. Uh, wondering why they weren't considering the school in the Habad. And. We, I went through the. Aviator Nation, which is. Already built out. It does not have a dining room. It is configured as a, a open to a nightclub. The seating is not as shown. And it's substantially different from what was approved in, uh, two thousand and ten. Uh, the staff stated that there is no restroom. And that's.
I had a conversation with Doug Burge largely about, uh. Parking issues, but, uh, nothing that's not on the Stafford list.
I forgot one thing.
Yes, John.
Uh, I did try to contact Stephen Hakim through email. Three or four days ago to try to get a. Uh, his view and walked site with him, but I got no reply.
Okay, questions of staff? I have one, uh, has, has. Has Regional Water Quality Control Board opined on whether this version of the project? Is sort of grandfathered in under that, what is it, table, table four ZZ or whatever it is. Uh, that, that permits, uh, an onsite wastewater treatment system? Um. Have, have they, or staff just assuming that it's grandfathered in, uh, because the previous. Iteration of this project was listed on the table four ZZ.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're making, uh, kind of a, an educated guess based on past experience. Uh, we believe that there've been projects in the past that have, uh, been modified. You know, after the application is first submitted and those projects have been accepted. Um, as, uh, still being part of that list. And so, uh, we did not. Uh, explicitly require the applicant to take this project back to the Water Quality Control Board. Um, but that's something that can be.
Okay, I get it. Uh, yes, John?
So you're saying that you don't consider it. That they have to look at it even though it appears the water usage is quintupled in this new project? And that the prior one was based on an office building versus a residential occupancy motel?
Yeah, the, the, the Water Quality Control Board, um, had, uh. Had, you know, they, they did not review the project when it was submitted. Uh, they just. Um, uh, you know, they, they just confirmed that the application was submitted with the city. And that was really the only qualification at the time is that there was an application submitted, something in the pipeline. Prior to the MOU with the city and. And if it was, then they were added to the list. Uh, and again, we've had projects that were modified. Uh, you know, whether increase or decrease, uh. Uh, plumbing fixtures, uh, or, or flow and those have been traditionally accepted.
Okay.
So, so this was two thousand and nine, you asked?
Correct.
So, okay, uh. My main question is, uh. I've got a lot of questions, but the main one is. Why does table figure three say that it's? Forty-six feet high to finished grade? And you're saying it's twenty-one feet. It's right on here, forty-six feet. Um, I don't understand.
Yeah, we, we did go through that question, uh, over the phone before. And there is a, a difference of opinion about how height should be measured. And, uh, I know, uh, Chair Jennings, uh, would likely recall, uh, in, you know. You know, a meeting many years ago where we talked about how buildings were to be, uh, measured. And the direction provided at the time, uh, for staff is we have to use the language in the code. Uh, whereas at the time, we were using a, uh, policy that would measure height. From the first floor, finished floor elevation. The code actually, uh, has two provisions on how to measure height. One is, the height is measured from finished grade. And that's a plane based on the, the pography of the property. And you measure height based on that and no portion of the building may project above that. The other, the other, um, uh, criteria is that you have to measure height. From the finished grade at the, uh, exterior perimeters, uh, walls of the building. And so for that, uh, we have to create a plane based on the finished grades. Around the building and you're sort of, um, triangulating. The, the, the grade so that the portions in the middle of the building. Um, are not allowed to be any higher than, uh, they would be, uh. based on, I guess, this this plane that's created based on exterior walls. So that's how this property, that's how this project was measured. There's a number of cross sections that the applicant provided. All of those are included as part of the architectural drawings that show, you know, various slices of the building and how the height was, you know, triangulated at those points. Now, the dimension that Commissioner Mazza is talking about is a dimension between the highest part of the building and the, you know, the finished floor of the either the garage or the first floor of the building. And again, that is not a measurement that is supported by the code. So we, that's not how the height has been measured ever since. Yeah, I want to say six, six, five years ago when that conversation come up at a at a planning commission meeting.
Well, what I don't understand is this building is fifteen feet from the hill. So the exterior of the building is open air. It's not part of the hill. And I don't understand, but I'll get into that later because we don't, I want to hear the public. My other question is how you count a garage is underground when it's only three feet underground?
Again, that's there is no criteria. I think we we have discussed this before in other projects. There is no criteria for underground spaces for commercial development. And so the only piece of information or clue that we have in the code is the definition and the requirements that we have for residential development. And in that, it allows for a maximum daylighting of three feet. And so this this project was designed to be completely underground with the exception of the required access into the space. Whether vehicle vehicular or pedestrian access as required by building code. Those were the only areas that were allowed to daylight. Everything else is underground or daylighting no more than three feet.
So you're saying that underground means you can pile dirt up against it and it's now underground?
That has been, that is, the the code does not give any instructions on on what is underground or what isn't. It just says as long as it doesn't daylight more than three feet. We've had a lot of projects where there's substantial grading and fill is put up against the building to comply with the basement rules. And we've had a lot of projects like this on residential projects that have been approved by the planning commission.
And we have a sixty-one foot
Commercial John, let's not, let's not, let's not debate about it. Let's just move on. Are there other significant questions before we get to the public hearing? Craig?
Yeah, if I can just fall and clarify what John was just asking. I, so Adrian, what is the finished garage elevation relative to the current existing parking lot elevation? It's approximately the same. Is that not correct?
I think they're close enough. I don't know the exact dimensions, but I can try to get that for you.
The, if you look on this for everybody, if you look on attachment four, which is PDF one thirty-eight, there's a rendering view that shows a car coming out of the the underground garage, and it looks to be at approximately the same elevation as the street. So, okay, so I I just wanted to confirm that. And also to confirm that as I read it, and because I'm hearing different numbers from different people, but I hear that I read the top of the railing. So we're not even talking about the 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 elevator shaft or any of those superstructures that sort of comprise another floor. Just the top of the railing is at sixty feet approximately, within a couple inches of sixty feet. The street level PCH is at twenty feet. So we're talking forty feet from PCH to the elevation of the the top of the railing. Is that not correct? Can see it on, I'm looking on a chart A two point one.
The lobby, the lobby
Is that twenty?
Finished floors at twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah. And and so PCH level is at twenty. So the railing is forty feet above PCH.
Okay, so these are questions of staff. They are not questions or not argument couch this question.
No, I'm not understanding if I'm told that, that, you know, twenty-eight feet of story poles is adequate to express forty feet of height. That's that's what
John on what the code requires. David, do you have question?
Yeah, just a question. I I'm a little confused. There's more to come on the noise issue, which you said would be dealt with potentially in a later amendment. Has staff analyzed the most recently supplied parking and traffic studies? Or is there more to come on that as well that has not yet been included?
So we have not had a chance to analyze any of that. And so that's, first of all, the noise study was provided to staff about a week ago. There was another noise study that was that was, I guess, going around that was prepared for the Malibu Inn. There was a different project that was proposed for that. But for this particular property, the noise study was provided just recently. And again, the mitigation measure to minimize the potential for noise currently prohibits the use of amplified sound on the rooftop decks. So we would have to analyze that as well as you mentioned, the the lifts. We would have to analyze the use of those lifts as public parking as well. That was not analyzed in the traffic analysis.
So is that the only part of the traffic and parking that you have not analyzed, which is the lifts? Otherwise, everything else you have reviewed and accepted?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the public hearing if there are more questions. Patricia, who we got for the applicant team, you know? Patricia, can you hear me?
There we go. Sorry about that. For the applicant team, I believe we have Doug Burge and several consultants. And then after the applicant, we have approximately twenty-five speakers. So and half of those require a translator. So if you would like to, let me know if you'd like to hear them first or on the second half of the speakers.
Can I ask, if if we if we're going to need to take a preemptive break at some point, should we do that now or should we hear all the speakers and then do it?
My suggestion would be hear the speakers and then take the break, but it's your pleasure.
That's fine with me. I just
All right. So they brought their own translator along, have they?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, let's do the twenty-five speakers that require translation first after the applicant.
Okay.
Wait a minute.
Only
You don't like that?
Sorry about that. Only half of the twenty-five require translation.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's twelve and a half people. So let's let's get them first. Okay, let's let's open it up. Let's get the applicant team. You want to unmute Doug?
I I don't see Doug in the meeting. If Doug is in the meeting, can he raise his hand?
You may find Joseph Lozama within the meeting as well.
Okay, yeah, Joseph. I don't
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we have you. Okay. Are you going to be the the potential, the principal speaker, Joseph?
I am not. I'm just trying to locate Doug. I believe he's in the same location as Zupati and Hakim's. So if you just give me a minute to coordinate that.
Okay.
Yes, he's with, he's on the same computer as the Hakims. So if you can locate them in the meeting, that's where he'll be.
Okay, can you unmute that computer?
Hello, we start video?
Hello.
Oh. Can you hear us?
Sounds like you, Doug. Is that, is that?
Yeah, that's Stephen Akim, Doug Burge here and the Akim Akim brothers. So we're ready to go.
Okay, all right. You have fifteen minutes. You can use all or part of it as you wish. You can reserve some of it for rebuttal if you'd like, but whenever you're ready, you're ready to go.
All right, yeah, if you can just, we don't need the fifteen seconds, but thank you very much. Okay, Stephen, take it away.
This is Alex. Hi, how are you? Adrian, thank you for your presentation. Good evening, Planning Commission and Chair Jennings. It is a pleasure and an honor to speak before you here today. My name is Alexander Hakim, and I'm one of the owners of the property located at two two nine five nine Pacific Coast Highway. We have been in planning for this project for a little over ten years now. A great deal of thought and due diligence has gone through this project to make sure it is the highest and best use for the site. And also something the city of Malibu can be proud of. Part of the reason this process has taken so long is that originally we had plans to make this an office retail center. We thought it would complement the pier and neighboring hotels to have ground floor retail and shopping close by with second floor offices on top facing the ocean. We were so far along that our application was even deemed complete by the city. But after meeting with the Coastal Commission and fellow city council and other members of the local community, there was there was a resounding sentiment that Malibu does not need any more office or retail. But instead, there is a dire need for more hotel rooms in the city. We found out that Malibu only has approximately a hundred and nine hotel rooms, forty-seven of which belong to the Malibu Beach Inn Hotel, and sixteen of which belong to the Nobu Riocon Hotel. Those two hotels alone make up about half of all the hotel rooms in Malibu. Both of those hotels are extremely pricey because they're on the ocean side. We plan to be a much more affordable option, being that we are on the other side of the ocean, yet still close enough to Surf Rider Beach, the pier and other local amenities. So after years of going down this long road, we decided to completely switch gears. And we hired Doug Burge as our local architect with Burge and Associates to help design this beautiful twenty-room boutique motel. We are extremely proud of the project we have come up with and what is before you here today. It is important to note that we are in a CB one commercial visitor serving zone. We are not asking for a zone text amendment or anything of that sort to change the zoning for this project. We are located between the Surf Rider Motel and the Malibu Beach Inn, which makes this motel fit nicely within the area. It is also important to note that we are not asking for one square foot more than what we are allowed to build for the point one five FAR code of Malibu. Many people think we are crazy that after so many years of going through all of this and the amount of money it has cost us and will continue to cost us, especially with the cost of subterranean parking, to only be able to build so few rooms. But we still think that this motel will be a tremendous benefit to the city, its locals and visitors alike. To put it into context, there are most homes in Malibu larger than the approximate seventy-eight hundred square foot motel project we are proposing today. Along with keeping this project within the FAR guidelines, we tried to do this project with little to no variances whatsoever. The only variances we are asking for are due to hardship. Some of the major benefits this project will bring to the city are the following. One, it will generate half a million to a million dollars in tax revenue to the city. Two, it will help curb the Airbnb problem that has gone rampant in the area. Three, it will add more hotel rooms to a city that barely has any. Four, it will create a much better flow of traffic on the PCH as we will be adding another point of ingress and egress with a much larger turnaround for cars to be able to get in and out onto PCH. Lastly, we will be creating construction jobs and helping revitalize a city and an economy that is in much need of recovery. After going through the details of this project with the Coastal Commission for the second time, now having a motel project and abandoning the office retail idea, office retail idea, the Coastal Commission gave us a wholehearted approval and even wrote a letter of support, which you should have in your file. For all of the following reasons, we feel that this project would be a tremendous benefit to the city, local community and tourists visiting this great city. And it will turn an empty parking lot that attracts trash, vagrants and homeless into a charming boutique motel that everyone can be proud of. Thank you for your time. Doug?
Good evening, Commissioners, Doug Burge, local architect. I just wanted to state for the record that we've done a lot of projects for the city. And a lot of people that first they, you know, they talk about things and they get up in arms and they, oh, my gosh, the traffic is not going to work out. What about the tourists? But in the end of the day, these end up being local projects, the Trangus projects, for instance. I mean, now we're using it for local concerts and it's it's becoming almost like a center of Western Malibu. We created the Surf Rider. It was, you know, basically abandoned apartment building and making that into one of the most incredible places now. And a similar model to what we've created today where that also is twenty-room motel. And where we created uses for that motel that can actually enhance and help the experience. But the end of the day, it's it's, we keep talking about tourists using these places, but it's actually locals. Locals use them when there when there's a flood, when you have to have no power in your house. You have to go to a project that has a generator that provides food service in times of need and times of the fires. It's they were used. They wanted, they were open. They wanted to be a part of the local community. That's where our relatives stay when we're when we're during a holiday. We want to have them not drive to the valley or not drive to Santa Monica. So we want to make it a local project. So we have to think of it that way. Before your screen right now, we have the definition of a motel facility, transient local. There's some people that are going to be talking possibly about how they figured this project to be a hotel. Well, it isn't. There's parking that's on the site. It says the parking, some of which have separate entrances leading directly from the outside of the building to spaces conveniently located on the lot and parcel land. You don't have to leave the parcel land for the parking and provides uses that you can't have the restaurant or meeting rooms. And we created this Surf Rider. We created a, it's called a prep kitchen. And it's strictly just to prepare food for the users of the of the hotel, in this case, a twenty-room or in a lot of cases with double rooms, you'd have forty people. And they're using a roof deck and they're using the facility and they're using the lobby. When it rains, they use the lobby. So it's it's almost like a perfect Malibu design because we're using something that's inside, outside and taking advantage of a rooftop. The project is definitely a CB one use and we're not asking to change that. Next slide, please. So one of the things that is interesting about our code, and we keep referring to all these, is that valet parking is not part of our code. Valet parking is a by-project use. What we want to show here is that we provided onsite self-parking for the requiredness of this project. Meaning we have twenty rooms with twenty twenty spaces. We have three spaces for the for the employees. We have also spaces that we have to provide that's used from the adjacent Malibu Inn project or current Aviator Nation. And that will be twenty-four spaces. So we provided all of these spaces to self-park. What you see here in this diagram is exactly what's going to happen when we're allowed to do the valet parking, because that's exactly what happens. Every restaurant in Malibu of any size from Nobu to V's to to the hotels to Sunset Restaurant all have valet parking. We can pick up twenty more, which are the red cars here, spaces, just regular valet, not stacked valet, nothing, twenty more spaces, twenty more spaces if we're allowed to do the lifts. We designed this building to go down an extra six feet so we can provide lifts that are not seen. Again, a valet operator would use these. So what now would be typically in the state of the staff report where you had anywhere from eight to twelve spaces only used for the public, we're going to have triple that. So besides this hotel use, this motel use, we're providing three times more. We'd like to provide that for this use. The other thing we did in this diagram to the right side is provide another egress and egress out of this parking lot where we're coming in and out, which is very important. We talked about the story poles, how they were not required, but we actually put them in because we think we shows. Actually, it's better now because I think it shows the public that we're not impinging and and where the buildings are set back. And then continue on to the next slide. And we can go back to this, by the way, when we have open for discussion. And then go to the next slide with the project. And I just wanted to kind of close with, you know, it's easy in Malibu. We've done this for many, many years. You can easily talk about what's wrong with any project. I think what we have to start doing is what's right about a project. What's right about this project is that it's a much needed local boutique hotel. Hopefully, we consider this a nice design. I I I take all my projects very personally. And I send a lot of care in massing and scale and putting something where it looks great. We have three times the public parking because that parking is atrocious in that area. So the local restaurants would be able to use it, tourists and even guests in our town. And then the much needed TOT that we've been looking for. So the end of the day, we get a beautiful, much needed project hotel versus basically what we talked about before, which is a trash lot that's which is a trash lot that's not used for these purposes. So we feel we have an excellent project. And also the other point is, is that other projects ask for variances on open space and landscaping. We fully comply with those very difficult rules on landscaping and open space. So we feel we have a great project, we're open for more questions and we're really to use our additional time and look at.
Stephen Hakeem would like to add.
How much time is left by the way?
Patricia?
Patricia? Four minutes and five, fifty-seven seconds.
Okay, so this is Stephen Hakeem, I'll just be brief. I do want to apologize to Commissioner Mazza. I did just check my email and you did email me, went into my junk email, so I'm very upset about that and wholeheartedly apologize for missing your email. I would have liked to meet you at the site. I just want to touch on the memo that we sent over on the conditions of approval that we asked to be modified and the explanation for those. One of which was the approved hours of operation for liquor service. You know, we want to provide good service to the guests so that they can continue to come back and something that the locals and visitors can be proud of. And we also don't want to be at a disadvantage compared to other hotels in the area. So for example, the Sea View Hotel, I believe, is able to provide liquor from seven AM until two AM and, you know, right now we cannot offer somebody a drink or a Bloody Mary with their brunch at ten or eleven AM. So to me, that didn't really quite make sense. And then touching on the amplified sound, which I know you guys spoke about, we wanted to provide these additional studies showing the support of the amplified sound. You know, we feel that it would also be a disservice not to have any sort of speakers or low-level ambient music, you know, playing while you're hanging out at the pool or, you know, eating at the restaurant. And just touching on the lift parking, to summarize what Doug had already said, you know, we don't need these lift parking spaces, but we do care about the community and we know that people want to be able to park in that area. So we would be willing to pay for and provide additional lifts. But of course it would not be viable or make any sense for us if we cannot offer it to the public, which we thought was something that staff would want. So we're open to discussing that. We, we thank you for your time and again, we'll save the rest for any questions. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Just before we go on to the other speakers, I mean, I'm trying to get my head around this. The staff's position that that the additional lift parking and the amplified speakers have not been considered, the amplified music has not been considered by staff. And, and so isn't to be considered by the commission because you haven't had an opportunity to analyze it. Is that correct, Richard?
That'd be correct.
Okay, so. Alright, so this goes back to the discussion we had at the beginning. If I could ask one of the Hakims. If you could unmute.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, fine. So you understand that we can't consider either the lifts or the amplified music under the proposal as it stands right now. And if you want us to do that, we have to continue this item so the staff can analyze. And my understanding is you did not want it to be continued. You wanted to drive forward, but without consideration of either the amplified music or the additional lifts. Am I correct or not correct in that?
Yeah, you are correct. We do not want to, to hold up this process or the progress, but we did want it to just be open to discussion and maybe we can come forward with an amendment or another solution that you see fit.
Yeah, okay, alright. I think I understand. Let's go forward with the remainder of the speakers. We have twenty-five, I believe. Is there any additional time for rebuttal that remains for the project applicants?
They have two minutes and forty seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you. Let I ask you, who's next in the speakers list then?
The first speaker will be Olivia Munoz. Jonah Bresla will be speaking on their behalf.
Okay, can you open the mic please?
Olivia, is that?
We have you now. Hello?
Hi, this is Jonah Bresla. Let me just make sure that Olivia knows.
Okay.
Por favor, Olivia, imprime SRS, por favor. Para sacar de mudo.
If you like, we can move on to the next speaker.
Yeah, why don't we move on to the next person?
Okay. Did you say Evelyn Bethcliff is still available, Jonah?
I think that she is.
Okay. Ricardo Blanco?
Ricardo, is that? You know, I think I see some folks have their hands up if you want to start with those folks that apologize for the difficulty.
Let's start with Gloria Gonzalez. Gloria?
Gloria?
She was unmuted.
Yeah.
Then she muted again.
Gloria, puede imprimir otra vez más SRS para sacar de mudo, por favor.
Okay, me escucha?
Yes.
Okay. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Gloria Gonzalez. He trabajado en propio Santa Monica Hotel desde que lo inauguraron a, a un poquito más de dos años. Para llegar a mi trabajo, yo tengo que manejar cuarenta y cinco minutos en la mañana y un poco más en la tarde. Porque es demasiado tráfico alrededor de, del PCH. Para poder llegar a mi trabajo, to tomo mucho tiempo porque el tráfico de ahí es muy pesado y si se aprueba este proyecto, va a ser más pesado aún. Quisiera que votaran en contra de la proposición de este hotel. Gracias.
Thank you. Gloria said, my name is Gloria. I work at the, at the proper hotel in Santa Monica. I've worked there for around two years. And it can take about forty-five minutes to get there and, you know, because of backup traffic on the, even on PCH, that makes it even worse. And so it can take longer even getting home. Please vote no against this project because the traffic is already bad and when the traffic gets worse, it affects everybody. Thank you.
Okay.
The next speaker is Lisha Rivas.
Lisha, puede poner SRS para sacar de mudo, por favor. Lisha Rivas?
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Lisha Rivas.
Okay.
Y vivo en la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Este es un hotel que dice que no será un hotel de lujo por lo que dice que no necesita promover un acceso asequible a la costa. ¿Será realmente asequible este hotel según ellos? Si cree que mi familia puede permitirse alquilar un lugar por doscientos cincuenta o cuatrocientos dólares la noche para quedarse cerca de la costa, entonces la verdad es que ustedes no comprenden la vida de la gente trabajadora como yo. Este hotel no hace lo suficiente para promover el acceso a la costa, lo cual es requerido por ley. Por favor, recházelo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisha said, my name's Lisha Rivas. I live in Los Angeles. This hotel claims it will not be a luxury hotel and so it doesn't need to promote affordable access to the coast. But will this hotel really be affordable? If you think that families like mine can afford to rent a place for two-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred dollars a night to stay near the coast, then you don't understand the lives of working people like me. This hotel does not do enough to promote coastal access, which is required by law. Please reject it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Leti Nataleño.
Leti Nataleño, puede poner SRS para sacar de mudo. Leti, está? Imprima. SRS, por favor. Leti Nataleño?
Let's go ahead and try Sandra Ramirez, please.
Oh, I see that.
Oh, is that Leti? Okay, one second.
Me llamo Leti Nataleño. He trabaja, he trabajado en Low Santa Monica. Tomo housekeeping durante tres años. Manejo hora y media para llegar a mi trabajo en la costa. Es demasiado caro vivir más cerca de mi trabajo, el tráfico ya es malo y este proyecto puede empeorarlo aún más cuando el tráfico empeora en el GPS. Nos afecta a todos. Voten en contra de este hotel.
Thank you. Leti said, good evening, my name's Leti Nataleño. I've worked as a housekeeper at the Lowe's Santa Monica for around three years. I drive over an hour and a half to get to my job on coast. It's too expensive to live closer and the traffic getting west is already bad and this project may further worsen it when traffic gets worse on the PCH, it affects all of us. Please vote against this hotel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Ramirez, please.
Sandra Ramirez?
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sandra Ramirez y trabajo como room attendant en Low Santa Monica. Es absurdo construir tantas habitaciones de hotel en Malibu justo en PCH. Vote en contra del proyecto Malibu Inn Motel. Tampoco necesitamos el proyecto Malibu Sea View. En ambos casos, la ciudad propone socavar su propio código de confi, de conificación, ya sea cambiándolo o usando variaciones. No es justo que los hoteles o los trabajadores del hotel permitan reglas especiales para estos nuevos hoteles. Rechace el Malibu Inn Motel. Gracias.
Gracias Sandra. Sandra said, sorry about that. So she was, she was saying that, you know, it's absurd to build so many hotel rooms in Malibu right now on PCH. You know, vote against this project, the Malibu Inn Motel. We also don't need the Malibu Sea View project. In both cases, the city proposes to undermine the zoning code, whether by changing it or by having a lot of variances. It isn't fair to hotels or hotel workers to allow special rules for these new hotels. Please reject the Malibu Inn Motel project.
Thank you.
Isabel Delacruz, please.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Isabel Delacruz and I am a member of United Local Eleven. Yeah, it is absurd like so many hotels and rooms in Malibu are running PCH. Please vote against the Malibu Inn Motel project. We also don't need the Malibu Sea View Inn project. In both cases, the city proposed to undermine its own zoning code. Whether by changing, it is promoting variety. It is fair to hotels and hotel workers to allow special rules for this new hotel. Please reject this Malibu Inn Motel proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Santos?
Victoria?
Mi nombre es Victoria Santos. Vivo en Los Ángeles. Este hotel dice que será hotel de lujo por lo que no necesita promover un acceso asequible a la costa. ¿Será realmente asequible este hotel? Si cree que mi familia puede permitirse alquilar un lugar por doscientos cincuenta, trescientos dólares o cuatrocientos la noche para quedarse cerca de la costa, entonces no comprende la vida de la gente trabajadora como yo. Este hotel no hace lo suficiente para promover el acceso a la costa, lo cual es requerido por la ley. Por favor, recházelo.
Thank you, Victoria. Gracias, Victoria. Victoria said, my name is Victoria Santos and I live in Los Angeles. This, you know, as others stated, this hotel claims it will not be a luxury hotel and so it doesn't need to promote affordable access to the coast. But will this hotel really be affordable? You know, my family can't afford to rent a place for three-hundred or four-hundred dollars a night to stay near the coast. And if you think that they can, then you don't understand the lives of working people like me. This hotel does not do enough to promote coastal access, which is required by law. Please reject it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Jaime Morales, please. Jaime?
Jaime or Jaime, yeah.
Yeah.
Mi nombre es Jaime Morales y trabajo como reclamadera en el Cerro Inuits by Marriott del Segundo. Es absurdo construir tantas habitaciones de hotel en Malibu justo en PCH. Vote en contra del proyecto Malibu Inn Motel. Tampoco necesitamos el proyecto Malibu Sea View. En ambos casos, la ciudad propone socavar su propio código de sonificación, ya sea cambiándolo o usando variaciones. No es justo que los hoteles o los trabajadores del hotel permitan reglas especiales para estos nuevos hoteles. Rechace el Malibu Inn Motel. Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you.
Gracias, Jaime. Jaime said, my name's Jaime Morales. I work as a housekeeper at the Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott El Segundo. And it's absurd to build so many hotel rooms in Malibu right on the Pacific Coast Highway. Please vote against the Malibu Inn Motel project. You just approved the Malibu Sea View project. In both cases, the city proposes to undermine its own zoning code, whether by changing it or promoting variances. It's not fair to hotels or hotel workers to allow special rules for these new hotels. Please reject the Malibu Inn Motel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Raúl Matias.
Raúl puede sacar de mudo.
I don't see them in the meeting. Is it possible that they're the iPhone that I see right here?
I think it is, yeah.
Okay, let's try it. But they need to state their name as soon as they get unmuted.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good evening, good evening, city council members. My name is Raúl Macias and I live in the city of Los Angeles. This hotel claims it will not be a luxury hotel. And so it doesn't need to promote affordable access to the coast. Well, will this hotel really be affordable? If you guys think that my family can afford to rent a place for two hundred fifty to four hundred dollars a night to stay near the coast, then I don't think you guys understand the lives of working people like me. Please, city council members, I just want you to do the right thing. Please, this hotel does not do enough to promote coastal access, which is required by law. Please reject it. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Followed by Claudia Aguilera, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we have you.
My name is Claudia Aguilera and I live in Los Angeles. It's absurd to build so many hotel rooms in Malibu right on PCH. Please vote against the Malibu Inn Motel project. We also don't need a Malibu Sea View project. In both cases, the city proposed to undermine its own zoning code. Whether by changing it or by promoting variances. It isn't fair to hotels or hotel workers to allow special rules for those new hotels. Please reject the Malibu Inn Motel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Hernandez?
Carlos está? Puede imprimir estrellas para sacar de mudo.
He may not be here. But thank you for your...
Okay, you had three others that we missed at the beginning.
I'll go back to Olivia Munoz.
Olivia, ya está? No sabe cómo. Olivia, puede imprimir estrella y después seis para sacar de mudo. Y antes si puede poner estrella nueve para levantar su mano, van a ayudar con esto también.
Olivia's in the meeting. I think she's just trying to... I apologize. Who's the next one?
Ricardo Blanco.
Ricardo, ya está? Puede imprimir estrella nueve para levantar su mano y después estrella seis para sacar de mudo.
Well, what we can do is we could start the other speakers and Jonah, if you want to stay online.
Okay.
We'll circle back.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for your patience.
It's our pleasure, Jonah. Who's next?
Scott Dietrich, please.
I'm sorry, what's his name?
Scott Dietrich.
I think Scott Dietrich has left the meeting, he's not there.
Okay. Mark Dempster?
Hello, commissioners, thank you for taking my comments. My name is Mark Dempster. I and my wife Kim own the residence, a residence across the street at 23006 Pacific Coast Highway. I may be incorrect in this statement, but I think we are the closest residential neighbor to this proposed project. Having said that, we are generally supportive of a hotel project in this location. We are supportive of the conceptual design that we've seen created by Burge. It seems very attractive and something that would be nice to be a part of. And from what we know, we are supportive of the Hakeem brothers as the developers. So what we're asking as a neighbor of one is that the planning commission do two things. One, ensure a thorough process and a well-reasoned decision. Particularly given the significant variances being requested. The volume of earthworks being proposed and the proposed use for events. It may sound like a statement in the obvious to ask you to be thorough. But there's been at least one PR-driven article that has appeared where it gives the reader the impression that this group has all but greenlit this project and is truncating or waiving certain steps in the process. So wanted to reiterate the same support that we did in writing to the planning commission. There were two letters submitted, one by Matt Goodwin regarding building code issues that need proper vetting and another by Stella Yap regarding noise and crowd and parking ordinances that need thorough vetting, which are probably all normal steps in your process. But just wanted to reiterate that we'd love to see those items really attended to and the right decision coming from that. We'd also like to see a high-level hospitality plan on this project. The Hakeem brothers are successful real estate developers. They are not hospitality managers. So what is the plan to run this operation? Not at a detailed level, but just what kind of neighbor will this hotel be or this motel? And will it be consistent with the other motels in the area? Thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you. Who's next?
The next speaker will be Stella Yap.
Hello?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
We've got you, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to our comments tonight. I have a couple of concerns and I emailed them to you, but I just wanted to review that the Hakeems are not asking for live entertainment and amplified sound at this time. Because, well, the sound study that I heard was for the Malibu Inn. We haven't seen a new noise study that takes into consideration the scope and height of their hotel as well as the neighbors like the Habad and the preschool that's next door. And so I hope that the staff is given and the public is given a noise study that is applicable after it's built perhaps, so we can really hear what's going on. And, you know, it's just not a hypothetical problem. We've had many years of noise issues with the Malibu Inn across the street. So it can get pretty loud over there and quite disturbing. And the way that Hakeems have run it before gives me pause on how things will work in the future. Of course, I'm not opposed to them developing a motel. I think it looks great as well. And, but I do have concerns of how it's going to run in conjunction with the Malibu Inn as Aviator Nation, which is going to be promoting events of three hundred and forty people. At the same time reducing their parking, at the same time not having a restaurant in there. And then the motel also having its twenty or forty guests and inviting their other guests and maybe having events there. It seems like there's a lot going on, not enough parking, a lot of noise, a lot of, you know, traffic problems, a lot of congestion, etc. Like that. So those are some concerns that I hope that can be addressed so that, that as neighbors, that we can live in peace and harmony with that project.
Thank you. That was the last speaker? Patricia?
We have additional speakers.
Okay.
Next speaker, Robert Allen.
Okay. It's for Alan.
Don't see him in the meeting.
Okay. Susanna Owens?
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Oh, hi, my name's Susanna Owens. Thank you for taking the time to let me speak tonight. I just wanted to say that I'm in support of this project. I did take a look at the detailed staff report and I think it's incredibly well-thought-out project. I know this area is in need of hotels and it will also help... What am I trying to say? And it will also help keep additional lift spaces, which is a great idea to help support the community. All of the variances I've seen are only variances due to hardship. I noticed another hotel being proposed for the same lot size is four times the FAR as this one. I think this developer did a great job and made a winning project for the city. Yeah, I would definitely support and approve this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Allen and Stella Yap's husband, so perhaps he's on her phone.
Ah, okay. Is Stella Yap still...
Hi, yes, I'm here. There's something, actually I'm not with him, there's something wrong with his computer and he wasn't able to... He lost the connection, so unless you want to give me his minute.
If he comes, no, 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 if he comes back in, tell him to let us know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Who's next?
Brianna Iker?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Brianna and I have followed many projects throughout the years here in Malibu. And I have never seen a development project come forward that was such a great benefit to the city. I know that in the last year, we have had issues with our city budget from five hundred thousand to a million. With our city budget and five hundred thousand to a million a year in TOT revenue is much needed. We all keep complaining about the Airbnb problem, but then why aren't we jumping to approve this project? As far as I can see, this project is essentially a buy-right project and they have an abundance of parking. I applaud this project and the city staff for working together. After so many years of this ugly parking lot across our beautiful Malibu pier, it's time this lot comes in line with the rest of the beautiful buildings in the area. And I would definitely support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Judy Edinger, please.
Who is it?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Judy.
Yes, hi. I was calling in support of the Malibu Inn Motel. I love the name. I also think that I want to bring up the point that a twenty-room motel would be a great fit for Malibu since it would be considered more of a boutique hotel. I really like the design with the use of the exterior wood. It looks like it would blend really nicely into the current landscaping. I agree that we need a new hotel and new growth in Malibu. I think it's been long overdue. I have a lot of relatives that come from out of town that would really enjoy a pool with a restaurant, especially in that location with a view of Malibu and the ocean. I look forward to having a new motel for my friends and family to come visit Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Nick Elieopole.
All right. Do you see him in the meeting?
I have a Nick U, but they don't seem to be unmuting.
You have a hand up.
That's Jonah Breisler.
Okay, let's... Go to Joe Drummond. Joe Drummond?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on, Joe.
Honorable Planning Commission. So we requested about the story pools. I traveled to the Chili Cookoff for locals' night on Friday and I didn't see them. And as I understand, they are finally up, but not at the correct heights. It is a visually impactful area of Malibu and story pools are indeed necessary. So why would they put up if there wasn't enough time for residents to see them? There should be great concern that outs are banned in the area and the former project applied for one day before the ban was for commercial retail space, not a motel that requires much more water usage. And the application changed dramatically almost nine years after the ban was put in place. The slope would be impacted negatively by this excess water usage, so the variance should not be approved. The parking needs in the busiest area of Malibu far outweigh the risks of such a project. The staff report states that a variance shall not be granted that would allow reduction or elimination of public parking for access to the beach, public trails, or parklands. It is currently used for beach and pier parking in the most highly needed part of Malibu with the highest traffic. But on-exempt grading and massive subterranean grading would also be structurally a big risk with the wastewater ban. Worst case, the project should be continued until 2028 if and when it can connect to a sewer system. The structure is also way too high. The elevator shaft alone from just the first floor perimeter wall is over thirty feet high and from the ground floor elevation is over four foot high. We have noticed the planning department has tried to miss no more perimeter walls when heights should be taken from the lowest height of the lowest perimeter wall that daylights. The retaining wall over forty-six feet high has its own violations through building and altering the hillside massively and puts the entire project at risk. The stack parking is also not viable during evacuation procedures. Given the impact of the potential huge amount of wastewater that is currently banned on an environmental review for the significant impacts to the geology with the landform alteration of the site and surrounding property should be addressed. Just because almost twelve thousand cubic feet of grading is exempt does not mean it is not altering the toe of the slope and landscape, which it drastically is. The project as it is currently has not been evaluated for impacts on environmental factor pursuant to SEQA, which is the staff report falsely states it has been and therefore can result in significant adverse impacts on public safety. The project also needs an EIR to study noise, traffic, and the impact of a combination of two venues next to each other, a nightclub next to a potential new hotel. The approximate water usage of four thousand and fifty-six gallons per day for two hundred and twenty-nine fixture units is closely underrepresented. One home across the street from our house in Big Rock that is attempting to increase fixtures from thirty-four to fifty-five units currently uses an average of almost half of this, eight hundred, eighteen hundred gallons per day. So this figure would likely at least be nine to ten times that number, given the number of guests and staff using the facilities. Even at a minimum of a third of this usage, it would still be over ten thousand gallons per day. The motel would use much more water than the average of eight to ten households. This would result in a sea fudge of groundwater pollutants into the ocean. Laundry should definitely be done off-site. The slope stability and size and stability...
Joe, your time has expired, Joe.
Oh, okay. Well, I've already dealt with all the numerous concerns and violations, so I hope you'll make the interest of Malibu residents more of a priority. Thanks.
Who's next?
Ryan Embry?
Ryan?
Thank you. There was a slide that was shown that did a synopsis of the zoning code for CV1. And I'm not sure that was accurate. I'd like to have the commission ask the staff on your commission time to explain that because I believe there is a resident-serving component required of every project in CV1. And I don't see like a meeting room like Richard Weintraub put over at the Wind Sale project across the street, which, you know, later became Nobu, but it was approved. And, you know, I don't see what, how it benefits the community other than it'll bring in more tourists that somehow would pay some tax. But that's usually offset by all the traffic, noise, congestion, and extra demand on public services. So it's not really a net gain for that, by the way, everybody. But I see this more as a hotel. If you're serving brunch and alcohol, as one of the Hakeem brothers had mentioned, that's not, you know, that's an event center and a destination. It's not a motel. And therefore, it is severely underparked for the proposed use of any food service or alcohol service. Parking is disconnected from the rooms entirely and is not fitting of the definition of a motel use. It's a convenient workaround, but, you know, the zoning is to be complied with. It's not to be creatively worked around and the target of misinterpretation for maximization of the project build-out. And I want you to be very clear about that is what is Malibu getting for this as residents? I don't see anything in that regard. The fire department will determine the concept of what's the ground floor. The elevator company is going to put a, you know, a letter G on the... The fire department will determine the concept of what's the ground floor. The elevator company is going to put a, you know, a letter G on the button to get you on the ground. That's where you start measuring and you go up from there. The parking is on grade at the street level sidewalk. And by the way, there's fourteen parking spaces that head right onto the sidewalk in the front. They're something like forty three inches from the sidewalk. Somebody steps on the wrong pedal, you're on the sidewalk and in PCH. And this has happened, it happened twice over at the PC Greens building. I have pictures of that one. A lot of cars are electric now and you step on the gas and they fly. They have lots of torque and we don't want that configuration. And that's in the front yard setback and it's not allowed by existing code. It's one of the variances. That's a safety problem. I want you to look heavily into curing that problem. Any auto lifts for parking spaces should be only for support staff and not to be monkeyed with for anybody else coming or going or residents who might want to, you know, it, it takes too much time and it's an evacuation problem. Um, please condition it on no public events at all. If this is a so-called motel, no TUPs. Um, I have plenty more that I, I should, should mention, but, um, on grade is the PCH grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
We have Mark Barrett.
Mark?
I'm just signing up for the, uh, the applicant side.
Okay. Um, I believe we just saw Nick Eliopola.
Was he one of Jonah's?
No, I saw somebody with their hand raised.
Um.
Okay. Alex, do you see anybody else?
I have Nick unmuted right now, but they're not saying anything. After that, I think you missed Pat Healy and that's it.
Yeah.
I think.
Okay. Do we see Robert Allen again? I know he was having difficulties.
He was, um, right, he was having difficulties.
Well, let's, let's start with Pat Healy then.
All right. Pat?
Unmute. Can you hear me now?
Got you, yeah.
You just muted yourself again.
We heard you for a second.
Pat, you need to unmute yourself.
There you go.
Ah. Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Um, actually, I'm, I'm stunned and surprised about this project. I've been involved as part of the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth for twenty five, thirty years. And I've never seen anything that highlights our code so much. I think the project has to go back to the drawing board and you have to get a definitive, um, statement from the Regional Water Quality Control Board as to whether this is a new project that's not allowed, which is slow growth position. Uh, because it's not in the area, it's in the ban area. Uh, there's never been a parking or traffic study done and, um, and no anal, uh, analysis of the community cumulative impacts of this project with all the surrounding large projects around it. Um, and not to mention the fact that the story polls have been up for one or two days only and, um, and I got to look at it this afternoon and it's interesting that the story polls start not on the ground level or grade, but in midair and that's very odd to me. Um, all the variances that are recommended by staff is the undoing of the codes that were put in place to protect Malibu's environmental sensitive habitat, small town audience and rural character. Malibu residents' quality of life is being undeniably degraded by this project. Um, the negative deck states the project has the potential to destabilize the slope above, causing slope failure. And this is being ignored by staff. The, um, the harm would be accomplished by excavating a mass, a mount, a massive amount of, of the bluff. Uh, staff said they are building into the bluff. That's not allowed under our code. Think projects can be notched into a hillside, but you don't excavate a, a block a hundred and sixty feet wide, fifty feet high and have an undisclosed depth, um, and it's simply not allowed. Um, the negative deck is justifying the project by stating it's the same height as the oversized county approved clock building. The clock building is higher than twenty four feet and that's what our co- code, code allows. Um, and if, if it was only twenty four feet high, there'd be no need for a fifty foot high retaining wall. Uh, the project as we estimated is about forty four feet high. Um, and just building a berm around, uh, the above grade parking lot doesn't make it subterranean. I mean, it's really, I, I can't quite believe this project. And then the retaining walls can't be over twelve feet and of course this one is fifty feet high. And that's because it's needed to support a forty four foot high structure. The cumulative.
Your time has expired, Pat.
Okay, all right. You, you got the written comments from Slow Growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I got a couple of people with their hands up. Jonah, is there somebody that, uh, we missed that you have to? That you want to bring forward?
He needs to unmute.
Jonah, you're, yeah, can you unmute, Jonah?
It doesn't seem to be unmuting.
Okay, how about the Nick? Nick U, whoever that is, I think that seems to be that that was somebody we had on the list. Is that correct, Pat or Patricia rather?
Nick Eliopola.
Yeah, he's.
There's a Nick with his hand up and he's unmuted.
So he's muted.
That concludes our speaker.
Well, now he's unmuted. You want to ask him?
Nick, would you like to speak?
Okay.
All right.
And we've, we've got all of Jonah's people that we had. It's Claudia Aguilera. I see that. Does she speak before?
Yes, she did.
She did, okay. All right. That concludes the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. Let's take, um, ten minutes. That suit everybody's needs. Okay, John, ten minutes. So it's now ten minutes after nine. Let's come back at twenty minutes after nine to resume. Thank you. Oh, and we're in the middle of a hearing, so you know, turn off your TVs, don't talk to anybody, all that stuff.
Who we missing?
Mr. Hill.
He's here, he's just.
We've got staff, there's Richard. There we go.
There we go. Smiling faces.
Okay, I spoke too soon. We have to reopen the public hearing because the applicant has two minutes and forty seconds of rebuttal time remaining, so. If you could open Hakim's. Or Doug Bird or somebody.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner, is Doug Birch. Just a few very quick points here, we were just mentioning laundry will be offsite. The street side parking is completely going to be improved from what it is right now. By we're going to have landscaping and barriers for cars. One thousand percent improved from what it is right now. Can't wait to have an operator to work the project, the garage is actually four to five feet below the parking lot, that was another thing. And lastly, just to let you know, Mark Barrett, who is the project geologist, he is available for you to have questions if those come up, and he is still available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, you still have a minute and fifty-five seconds, are you completed your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing, we're now back at the commission table. We've got a lot of different issues to address here, and it would be useful, I think, to try to focus our attention on them one at a time. Particularly those issues which one or more of you feel are fatal to the project. If we can go in that direction and try to talk about the same subject rather than jumping around, I think it would be helpful to getting us out of here tonight. John, you've got your hand up.
I have a quick question to Patrick, just it may affect the whole thing. And that is that the applicant stated that his prior project that he filed in two thousand and nine was deemed complete by the city. At that point, it's my understanding that the project is now in the hands of the city. And I wonder the propriety. I, as I understand it, the only thing you can do at that point is withdraw the project. You can't start a whole new project. If it wasn't deemed complete, you could amend the old project. So I'm wondering if all the entitlements they got by filing in two thousand and nine should be told to the point at which the new application should have been made.
All right, Patrick, you understand the question?
I, I believe so, but my one kind of brief confusion is that the deemed complete versus obtaining entitlements. Is that, I guess I'm a little bit confused on that, is that?
No, no, there's a process, as I understand it, where you apply for a CDP.
Right.
And, and the staff asks you to give you a bunch of stuff.
Sure.
And you finish it all, and the staff goes, okay, that's all. Here we go, it's now, and we're now doing the staff report and going on. And all of a sudden we hear, well, no, that didn't really happen, they changed it to a totally different use. And I, I always understood that once it was deemed complete, it was deemed complete, it was done. The application.
Well, I mean, so before, I guess before I answer the hypothetical, Adrian or Richard, do we have confirmation on that? I, I know that the this kind of lengthy application issue, what we looked into was kind of this, you know, every six months, as long as you are progressing towards it, it remains active. This is the first, I am hearing that if in two thousand and nine, it was deemed complete, Richard or?
Two thousand and nine, it was some point after that.
Excuse me, some point after, between two thousand and nine, when they originally applied, and today's current date. Is this, is this accurate, Adrian or Richard?
Richard, go ahead.
Sure. Stal, I was waiting a minute there, see if you were to speak too, but the folks are allowed to modify their applications essentially up until the hearing. We, you know, we've referred to projects, you know, as almost fluid, I guess you could say, up to the minute of the hearing, because for example, you know, if there's issues with views, we'll deem something complete, put out the public notice, find out the second floor of the house no longer, you know, we could support that because a neighbor came out at that time prior to the hearing, and the second floor blocks are viewed, so things do change, the projects are fluid. But as you mentioned, Pat, there is a difference between complete and entitlements. Once these entitlements are issued, then any change to the project needs to be handled through an amendment or a new application, depending on where they are. And Adrian, on this one, entitlements were never obtained, correct, and no hearings took place?
Yeah, and I think there is a difference in what is deemed complete, our definition of deemed complete is actually a different definition than what the applicant is talking about. We had a project that was, you know, that had most of the seminal requirements at one point, and we proceeded to do an initial study for that project. While the, you know, immediately after the public comments were received, the applicant decided to go in a different direction, so we actually never had an opportunity to provide a response to all the public comments related to the Sequoia document, and there were additional incomplete items that would have been required for a hearing. So we didn't technically deem the project complete at that point, but it was close.
Let me add a second part to that. So what, so an applicant, an applicant could apply in two thousand and nine for something. And as long as he wrote you a letter or did something, every six months, he could go on forever, and he could waive himself from all new requirements because he's grandfather. Going and going and going, and then he says, oh, I don't want to, I don't want a commercial building, I want a hotel, because now they changed the rules and hotels are cooler. How long can that go on? Can it go on for thirty years?
So, yeah, let me just clarify that, so can an application remain open for thirty years? I suppose it can, and, and we actually have a lot of projects that have very old you know, entitlement numbers, in fact, we have a project that's going to be coming before you that it was accepted in two thousand and six. So there's, there's, there is various reasons why applications sometimes are put on hold. And sometimes it's fire, sometimes is, you know, water access, whatever the case may be. And as long as they are working with us and continue to demonstrate their willingness, willingness to proceed with the application, our policy has been to keep those applications open. Now, to answer your question about whether the new rules don't apply, the, the, the fact is that until such time we deem a project complete, the new rules will apply. And in this case, they revised their project in two thousand and eight, excuse me, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen or something like that. And they designed a project that is in compliance with all the new rules, with the exception, of course, of the variances that they're requesting. So they're not, they're not grandfather in any way, it is a project that is subject to all our new rules and regulations, and is up to you to make the decision on it.
But you're saying they're grandfather as far as the use of water?
That is correct, yes.
Why would that be different than the use of nails or something?
Well, let me correct that, not use of water, they are grandfather in that they are part of a, a list that was generated by the Regional Water Control Board for not, you know, for being on a pipeline that would allow this application to move forward without it being in the provision until such time the phase three would be available to them.
Just to clarify that, you did say earlier, though, that you're, you're, just your thought that they're still eligible for that prior approval is based on an educated guess that we haven't confirmed that, okay?
That's right.
And, and I'm still sort of confused about what they have to be doing over the period to be exercising some kind of due diligence to keeping the application alive, because you know, I looked in on base and didn't see anything for, I don't remember the period now, but it was something like between twenty ten and twenty seventeen or eighteen. There's nothing, so. You know, what constitutes keeping the project alive, I guess, is to follow John's question.
Are you talking about in the context of the Regional Water Quality Control Board list, or are you talking about just in general?
In general, with respect to submitting one project, and then, and then, you know, coming back sort of much later with something substantially different and saying, no, this is still the same project.
Well, I, I think what we have to keep in mind is that this application came in before a lot of the documents were scanned and put into on base. So there is a file, but it's a hard copy file that keeps a record of a bunch of materials that were submitted during the time you mentioned, Commissioner Craig. So, so that, yeah, they, now, again, our policy has been that as long as they're, you know, proactively trying to resolve the issue that is keeping their application inactive, we have allow the application to remain open. So there are cases where, you know, because of fire flow or because of other reasons, they have been kept on hold for a long time, and they don't submit any documentation for a long period of time. Our policy has never been to close out those applications because it's a huge burden on those property owners that were affected by something that was out of their control. That's not necessarily what happened here, they have been, you know, you know, they might, may have been a period of maybe a year, maybe six months, where actual physical information wasn't submitted, but there was always a flow of information and communication that took place with the applicant.
Okay, so let's try to move on to.
Can I have Patrick answer that?
Answer what?
Answer what, yeah.
Everybody else is answering, but he's the attorney.
Yeah, yes, the, the, the city attorney's office has spoken with, with the planning department, and we are in agreement with that policy.
Yes, just real quick, Assistant Planning Director Fernandez is, when you said phase three, that, that is our phase three sewer connection?
That would be phase three of, yeah, the waste, the, the city, the city's wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, so Patricia, can you help me unmute Mr. Birch?
Alex? Can you please unmute him?
Yes. Hello? This is Doug.
Doug, this is Dennis, so my question to you guys are, is, and I'm thinking as a contractor now, are you with this phase three thought that may come up someday, are you guys going to future the system, so are you going to do a stub out towards the street, so maybe someday you fill the tank with either sand or whatever you do, like I had to do at the tow yard? Is that something you guys have thought about to future this, which is nothing, but just to get ready for a phase three hookup at some point?
Yeah, just for you to know, that's exactly what we've been, when we're dealing on the colony and dealing with our other Malibu Road projects, it's certainly something that we talk about when we get to the construction phase, talk to our septic consultants. So that's really something they're recommending too, and it's like you say, it's fairly easy to do, but it's also something that we can consider, and it's something that easily is done.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so let's try to focus on, we've got, we've got a lot of issues, the, the calculation of the height issue is one issue that has been raised earlier. We have three different variances, any one of which would knock this project out. And then finally, for my own purposes, I'm having a hard time understanding how we're going to be able to handle the relationship between the two properties if the Aviator Nation property is going to remain as a potential event space, and this may be the issue that maybe why Adrian and Richard wanted us to handle it first, but, but, so we have all those things to talk about. Let's pick one and go, Craig?
Yeah, I think a good threshold issue, it sort of relates. Excuse me?
You're muted, you were muted, go ahead, you're on, you're fine now.
I think a good threshold issue that's related to what you just said is the zoning question. I've heard each of the applicants now, I'm pretty sure each of them in their talk just now referred to it as a hotel, and, and referring to the other hotels too. And, you know, I think the Manny Brothers attorney made some pretty good points in this regard with respect to the zoning, that this really is too squeezed too tightly into the definition of motel, if you've got, you know, bartenders and brunch and a kitchen and T U, talking about T U Ps for events and valets who are, you know, a motel is a self-parking proposition, it's, this is, this is a, this is a hotel in sheep's clothing, I think, is, is what we're looking at here. And that's to, to other, other considerations that I think are being glossed over.
Okay, that is, that is a critical point, can you, can you give us a discussion, Richard or Adrian, about the difference between a hotel and a motel, and why staff believes that this fits within the latter category?
Yes, Adrian, let's bring up the, or I can bring up the definition if you want to demonstrate, because how this meets it.
Give me a second here. You might, in your discussion, compare it to the Surf Rider motel, because it seems similar other than the valet. And, and, and by the way, the valet is extra, right, so that's that's for the planning commission to consider. Should should they want additional parking spaces, or should they want, should you want them to provide the lift, the car lifts? But the project as design does not need the valet, and it actually meets the required parking spaces based on the code. Now, we do have two different definitions, we have the definition of hotel, and we have the definition of motel, and I think we can start with the definition of motel, since is, since that's what staff feels this fits into. And the definition is a facility offering transient lodging accommodations to the public in a group of attached or detached buildings containing guests, some or all of which have a separate entrance leading directly from the outside of the building to automobile parking space conveniently located on the lot or parcel of land, does not provide accessory uses such as a restaurant or meeting rooms, and not otherwise open to the public. And so the distinction was made that on the very last part of that, that says not otherwise open to the public for the Surf Rider motel, it was decided that provided the restaurant was only offered to guests, then it's not a component that's then. Then it's not a component that's then offered to the public. It was allowed to be still within the 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 confines of what the motel definition is. Now, the hotel room that Norm is processing, that does include a restaurant that would be. You know, that would be available to the public. So that there is a difference there between those two. But again, it is all a component of a conditional use permit and it's entirely up to the planning commission to decide whether you know, a restaurant not available to the public fits into this definition or not.
And that is why as part of his presentation, Doug Burge was mentioning about how the food prep area was created. He was mentioning, he was bringing that up because this was a concern of the commissions. When we looked at the Surf Rider motel, there was a concern that if they were providing food, how could we ensure that it didn't turn into a restaurant? So we limited the upstairs deck to the the patrons of the motel and then also allowed for the in-room service and how the food was the kitchen they had on site there, how it prepared the food.
Okay, so John, you've had your head up.
Yeah, as I remember, and I have it here somewhere. The Surf Rider had super restrictions on what it could serve and how much it could prepare in the in the kitchen. Are those restrictions the same on this hotel motel? They had a very limited space. They weren't allowed to cook anything from scratch. You know, there's a whole bunch of stuff they had.
And if the commission wishes, I could go pull that resolution and look at it.
Okay, well, we can do that a little later. I wish you would, but my real question is, if we approve these variances that say they want to TUP or they want to have events or things that Surf Rider was not allowed. And which doesn't seem to fit this definition. Have we, if we approve those, have we changed it to a hotel? By approving those, because it seems to me that if it's a motel, and this has to do with parking, if it's a motel. It's different from a hotel that has different requirements. If we go and say, okay. As it stands without us voting yet, that it's a motel. But then we go and vote on some variances that turn it into a hotel. Can we do that? And I would assume we can't. That's one question.
Not without a variance. And I think we also have to keep in mind that they do have the ability to provide the cart lifts. And so, again, if parking is an issue, they can request the variance and provide a cart list, which can help with complying with those requirements. But again, it is all entirely up to the planning commission.
No, but my real question is, I guess it's to Patrick. We have a zone CV one. And we say, okay, this is CV one, it's a motel, but we do variances that make it a hotel. Okay, is it? Does it now require it to be changed in zoning? Or can you just, could you take a house and give it a variance and say, yeah, but you can serve dinner to a hundred people every night? Is it a house or is it a restaurant? Not getting what I'm saying? No, you know.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Maybe a wrinkle on that is to say, you know, these two lots are, they're not lot tied, but they do have a deed restriction that that gives them a certain nexus. It's the same owner and we've got the Jupe in existence already. That basically says, in fact, this is one big project that we just haven't seen the other half of yet. And that's a separate argument, whether this is being piecemealed or whatever, but for the for the purposes here, they could just come back and they could say, okay, we've got the rooms now on the east lot. Now we're going to like make our hotel as John's question here by fitting out the the original Malibu in into a proper restaurant and turning it into a whole facility with event rooms and so forth.
Yeah. And so, you know, I guess, you know, and and not to, you know, be redundant of 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 Adrian, you know, I I don't. I if the planning commission feels that those variances converted or not converted, but but change its use from it from a motel or or a hotel that, you know, that is kind of, that's that's more up to up to you all than 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 myself to say, no, you can't or 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 cannot do it. Is there a specific variance that 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 you had in mind? Specifically as it relates to this project that you think that, hey, if we pass this variance, it is now this this changes the the, you know, the descriptor motel and it's it's more likely a a hotel? Is there a specific one that you have?
Well, let me give you an example.
John.
Well, I'm sorry.
John.
Okay. We we say, okay. You can have guests and then go to the restaurant and it's restaurant. Okay, and it's automatically a restaurant if guests could come in and use it. Non-guest, non-guest, okay. Now, we've turned it into a hotel with the LIP. And the coastal commission says, you got to come to us to change zoning. Planning Commission can't do it. But we just did it.
I I'm more than usually, more than usually lost here. What provision of the resolution? Can you point to that you feel would allow the public to come in to use the restaurant, for example, or any other thing that would turn it from a motel use into a hotel? But not not hypothetically, is there something in the resolution? That you feel gives that result?
Outside use.
I'm sorry?
Outside use by non-guest.
And so that's in where now?
Oh, God, I don't know. Adrian, where is it? Which variance?
Is there a provision that allows the outside use of of what, John, of of of?
Anything.
Of anything, okay. My understanding is that this is not, but it is Adrian, is there something in the resolution? That allows for the general public to use the space?
Uh, no, to the contrary, there's an actual condition that requires that the space would only be used by guests. So they're okay. So I think I think the question. Excuse me?
Does it allow to U P's? Does it allow events?
Uh, same as what you have approved for other hotels and motels. We actually added the condition that should they have events that trigger the need of a TUP that a separate TUP be processed for that.
Okay, but is it proper to give a TUP to a zoning that doesn't allow those events? This does not allow media rooms separate, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Right, but but I mean, yeah, I mean, I apologize for interrupting you, Commissioner Ross. Yes, I mean, that that doesn't change the fundamental use of it as a as a motel for the same reason that other TUPs in the city, and I'm sure Adrian and Richard can speak much more eloquently on the matter, I'm sure. Didn't change the use, but typically these wouldn't be allowed on a on a day-to-day basis. That's why you have to come to the city for a TUP. And so that, and so to answer your question, you know, as as directly as I can, no, I do not think you know, authorizing a temporary use permit for a temporary event would would change the fundamental use of the property. And train and transition from a motel to a hotel.
Okay, something else on the definition then. It says directly. Some or all of the rooms must be directly associated with the parking space. You can walk out and get in your car. In this case, none of the rooms do. Not some or all, not some, but none.
Um, let me suggest this. There's a lot of issues here. You like this one about the zoning issue, and I take it that Craig does too. Maybe we should take a little straw vote to see whether this is an issue that's got legs. And if it does, we can talk more about it. If it doesn't, maybe we can move on to any one of them.
Well. I've got I've got another piece on the zoning question too, that's sort of separate.
One of you, is it separate or you want? Let's let's just do a little straw vote.
Jeff, here's what I'm trying to get at with this. Before we do any of this stuff. Can we violate the zoning? Can we? The zoning says motel. Okay, and it specifies what a motel is. Can we say, ah, no, we don't care.
See, the the I understand your point, John, but the but from my perspective, we're not doing that. We're saying this is a motel. It meets these definitions. And so, no, we're not violating the zoning ordinance. You're saying. We are, but.
In the case of the last one, which is in there. It does not fit the definition of a motel.
I I get it. That's your position. And my position is it does. And so, you know, we're back to the question, can you count to three?
No, we're not to can you count to three? We're in what's legal, because we've got lawyers circling here. And I know, David, I know, David, you don't care what's legal.
John, it's your definition of what's legal. That doesn't define for the rest.
Any lawyer can tell you some of all doesn't mean none.
Okay.
Associated with could mean any number of things. It doesn't mean you have to walk out the door and there's your parking place. How do you interpret the phrase associated with? Different people have different definitions that mean different things to them. You are not an oracle that's defining for us what the law is. We all have our own definitions and our own opinions. I respect yours. I respect yours. I don't necessarily agree with it all the time, but I.
I want to read the definition. It says have a separate entrance leading directly to an outside space, directly to. Doesn't say associated with. So let's be.
Yeah, so there's another side to the zoning question. Just to answer Patrick's question a second ago, though. A TUP to me seems like it would be a classic case of an accessory use. That that's not, that's not what a motel is. Once you're talking about a TUP, that's a hotel. Anyway, the other the other side of the zoning question is this zoning requires that it serve visitors and residents. And I'm I haven't heard anything from anybody that's talking about how this is resident serving other than sort of the most incidental reasons like, oh, you know, I want to put my friends up once a year somewhere. Well, I don't know how much that serves the resident or the T O T argument. I don't see the nexus there because, I mean, I feel like probably a few pennies of my tax dollars pay for the Black Hawk helicopter that comes by my window, but that doesn't mean it's coming to serve me.
Okay, so if 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 you concede that a motel is a permitted use in CV one, how would a motel ever be serving the 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 local residents? Except by allowing guests to stay there from out of town? How would it ever? How would it ever have that? Because you can't, you can't have it. You can't have a restaurant. You can't go in there to eat. You can't use the space. How is it ever going to be resident service?
Actually, in this case only, it may be because it's providing parking for the public, for resident and the non-users of the hotel.
And in that regard, this is denying a substantial amount of existing de facto public parking.
Existing de facto public parking. Have you heard yourself? It's it's private property, man.
Public paid paid public parking. Look, public parking is all paid these days, but it's forty, it's forty spaces. People come to the beach for an hour or two or three. Those forty spaces turn over two, three, four times on a beach day. So that's, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty cars that will not have an opportunity to park now.
Can I just say that I share that concern that you're raising a hundred percent, but just drill down on it? They've let the property be used for public parking for forty spaces. Now we're telling them, hey, you can't do it with those forty spaces. That's what you've got to use your property for because we need the parking. We can't do that. They they were serving a public interest and their own economic interest by making those spaces available. I'm terribly concerned that when you eliminate that parking and you add a driveway, because I have very mixed feelings about this, right across the street from the most dangerous driveway we have, which is the driveway into the Malibu Pier parking, that you're creating a dangerous situation. But I don't think the solution is to say, well, you can't, you can't do this because you're doing away with the parking that we're going to make you have. We can't do that.
Well, I think the parking is a separate issue and that's a whole big conversation about a lot of and maybe relates to the Jupe, but here, just in the context of the zoning, we would be taking away a a use that is relevant and and making it more of a privatized thing to the to the twenty holders of the keys to those motel rooms. They're now the private beneficiaries versus this is, you know, so.
Okay, so the you spent about twenty minutes now on the zoning issue. I don't think the zoning issue has slags. Could we take a straw vote to see whether it does? Do you want to continue to argue about it? Let's take a straw vote.
You know, I I'm gonna.
Let's leave it hanging.
I just want to say that my position is we don't have jurisdiction to change the zone, so.
Okay, we got that. We got that. I understand your position. Are there other issues that anybody would like to talk about other than the zoning issue?
Oh, we got tons.
Also on the zoning, it requires a market analysis indicating the clear and compelling economic and social need in the city. And they did submit a page and a half saying with some dollar signs, but there was no discussion about the social implications other than this might relieve the Airbnb issue, but our new ordinance on that that Coastal just looked at today, it looks like that's going to relieve a lot of that because it's requires the proxies in the home and so forth. So I think I I don't see that the SDR problem is is a problem that this is necessarily needs to solve yet at this point. So I don't know. There's any discussion of the social need.
I propose when you go on to the mitigated negative deck.
Your argument would be I did be that that the application in fact was not complete because that that study was not submitted as part of the application, right?
Uh, well, they did submit it to us late in the day after the last hearing before this one, but it doesn't.
But but the municipal code requires it to be submitted as part of the initial application.
True, I mean, but if we're going to talk about incomplete application, I I have another list of stuff.
Can I just address the one point you raised very briefly? I mean, I I don't know whether it fits your definition of social need, but the notion that we live in a community that has a total of call it a hundred and ten hotel motel beds. Is absurd. I mean, whether it's there or someplace else, we need more hotel beds for relatives, friends, people who are coming out here, and it seems to me that that qualifies as a social need.
Pacific Palisades has no hotels or motels.
Okay, do they have the same tourist issue going to the beach on the weekends that we do? I I don't know.
They have some nice beaches.
We have approximately four hundred and eighty-three short-term rentals operating today.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to address your specific issue of can you make a case for there being a social need? I think you can, but I don't want to, you know.
Okay, so so let's, at some point, we're going to have to fashion a motion here and you guys are going to have to select the issues. Those of you who want to kill the project are going to have to select the issues that you're going to raise in your in your motion. So let's move on and discuss them.
Okay, I would like to discuss the validity of the mitigated negative deck and the traffic study.
Okay.
The basic theme would be, and you guys chime in, this was done for an office building. Okay. The traffic study was done, this was done, I forgot, two thousand and six or something. Long time ago. And traffic has changed, as we know. There is no consideration really for this being a motel versus an office building in in the mitigated negative deck. And there's no zero consideration for what David brought up earlier. The traffic impacts on Coast Highway in the worst intersection we have. We required Norm, we required the Malibu Bay Inn three hundred feet away to show us how they could get out of their hotel and cross the street. Do a whole study on that. In this case, we have zero, nothing about how do you turn left? How do you turn right? The fact that it's in right at a traffic light where everybody backs up, so you can't go anywhere. It's right across the street, as David said, from a terrible situation of backup. And it doesn't have, as we required Norm's hotel isn't isn't even as bad an intersection. Isn't, isn't even as bad an intersection. And we're required to have a traffic bond. And not to let, you know, so. There's a difference between a, a mediocre mitigated negative effect if. Deck and zero information. And that's what we have as far as. How do you interact with Coast Highway? We have zero. It's required. It's required to say what this motel does to that intersection.
I've got about half a dozen other points right on that.
Well, let's keep going. Everybody chime in.
It's, you know, I think we need a study of the increased complexity that around that stoplight. Um, the news, the traffic study that we have was done before the new stoplight in front of the Manny Brothers was put in, and that one is. Unique among all the lights on there in not being on the timed circuit. It's an on-demand push-button light. So that creates an element of chaos in the, in the traffic dynamic there. You're adding another driveway, uh, which is another source of sudden stops and turns and crossings. We looked at the, the, if you wanted to go east from this site. You'd be required to do sort of the comparable cowboy maneuver that we didn't like at the Manny's site. Where you'd have to zip out across all the lanes of traffic to get to that, uh, U-turn lane. Pocket that gets your U-turn at the pier. Otherwise. If you don't do that, you have to go make your U-turn all the way up at, at Cross Creek and come back. Um, none of that has been studied. Uh, the, the city's twenty sixteen collision study shows this area to be the most chaotic. That was not addressed in the, in the traffic study we have.
Okay, so can these all be sort of rolled in together that, that the negative deck is inadequate because it. Because the parking and traffic study is.
Well, and I would say, you know, if we wanted to go ahead with this, that you would want it to have a more serious study of the traffic. And included in part of that is, uh, the number of trucks on P C H. I confirmed with Adrian. This is just the construction period, but. The, the staff report specified a hundred and eight hundred seventy-five trucks. And I said. But aren't we limited to ten cubic yards per truck? And he said, yes. So that's twelve hundred and twenty-six trucks. And. We also don't have any analysis of any potential cumulative impacts on the traffic. Maybe John said this, but you know, suddenly we've got Norm's Hotel. We've got this, there's, there's nothing that's saying, let's look at this all at once. And I think that's. That's been a big problem down there with the parking and, you know, we maybe traffic and parking done as one study.
But can I just say, that's why I asked the question earlier, and if staff wants to readdress this, I asked the question. Is there an adequate parking and traffic study? Or are you meeting or requesting more in order to go forward with this? And I thought the answer was they have what they need.
So staff, let's address the issue particularly of the timeline of the study.
Uh, yeah, so let's, uh, this, just very briefly. There was a traffic, uh, report that was done, uh, that also included a parking analysis. It was originally prepared, uh, September two thousand and thirteen, and then it was updated. Uh, specific to this project in April of two thousand and twenty. This is a document that was actually included as an attachment to, um, the initial study. We also have Troy here. Uh, from, uh, Public Works that can answer, uh, any questions related to. Uh, you know, the traffic, uh, you know, report and, um, you know, what was required for that.
Came out after, uh, that came out before the Manny's light was put in and before Norm's Hotel. So. Conditions on the ground are changing faster than, than any report we have in hand.
Well, my question would be of Troy. Was anything other than parking, was there any consideration to traffic? On the highway. Turning in and on to the highway, traffic coming up the highway. And the effects on the Civic Center and. Well, we basically have a disaster from, from Civic Center Way, maybe Webway, but Civic Center Way to McDonald's. We have a disaster. And I didn't see a word about any of that. Is there anything, was that ever studied?
So be, before Troy answers that question, I, I do want to address Commissioner Hill's comment. The, uh, sequel analysis is required to analyze those environmental impacts. Uh, based on the timeline for which the document is being prepared. So as you pointed out, things have changed, but the sequel document, uh, we started that process. At the same time, this document was actually updated. Uh, and we were pretty far along with that. So. It, it may not, it may not address what is more, you know, what. Has maybe more currently happened, but it addresses what the baseline was at the time the document was prepared.
But wasn't that the document prepared for an office building?
It was prepared originally for an office building, but it was then updated. Uh, for the motel. The motel, uh, project was updated in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And the report was last updated in April of two thousand and twenty.
But it was updated for parking only, correct?
It was updated for, for, for both. I think the. The thing to keep in mind is something Troy can also address is that. Based on the, uh, trip manual. It was determined that the motel would generate less traffic than the, uh, shopping center. And so for that reason, uh, maybe, uh, a full updated report wasn't required, but you know, Troy can. You know, clarify at that point.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, very much like Norm's Hotel and the, the traffic study that was prepared for that, there, there was. An existing use and the traffics, the, the traffic volumes or, or numbers that were, uh, assumed for that existing use. Um, may or may not be higher or lower than, than the, the projected use. This, this motel has the same situation. Has an existing use and the, the proposed use, uh, actually shows a lower per-trip generation. So there is. Um, you know, there is some benefit to that. The, the, the study was updated to include or at least. Um, analyze those aspects of it. Um, the, you know, also in play here is that signal synchronization project that. John, you, you referenced earlier as, uh, something that you, you, you mentioned was going to make traffic faster. It's actually not necessarily going to make traffic faster. It's going to synchronize the, the traffic to. So hopefully, you know, kind of include fixing the chaotic situation that you just referenced there at that, that location. So there is, um, there, there is a lot of moving parts and the, the synchronization. Uh, project has analyzed the traffic up and down that, that corridor.
Let me ask you this. As Craig said. Three hundred feet away is a light that's not in that synchronization. So that kind of makes it move. And, uh, but what I'm really after is we can study the parking all we want. If we have. People going in and out of there, we already have a nightclub, okay? We already have three hundred and forty people that can exit within a half an hour when they close. Uh, we already have a mess. Does this increase that mess and shouldn't it be studied? And then we also have to look at the fact that. When, when we considered. Coast Highway. Looking at traffic manuals generated. The traffic study for Whole Foods, it said traffic hadn't increased in twenty-five years. Uh, you know, you have to look at real, real life, real life stuff instead of craziness like that.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'd be less concerned about the, the vehicle miles traveled than the actual. Flow dynamics, like for example, just this one question. How does a car coming out of the hotel turn left to go east to Santa Monica? Where are they supposed to go?
Down the street.
To Cross Creek?
You can't make a left. You have to make a right. It's, it's, it's in the report. You can't go left.
So you have to, you have to go to Cross Creek.
Unless you're able to get into the median lane in the middle and get to the U-turn line right by Malibu Pier. If no cars are coming, otherwise you have to go over to Cross Creek.
Well, I want to, I want to point out that that's about ten feet.
Yeah, I said if no cars are coming.
You gotta go two lanes in a twenty-foot car and make a, a, make a turn and get into it.
Like the people when they're coming out of Jack in the Box.
You're going to go down to Cross Creek, turn in and then come back around. It just, just look at Chairman. What he does every day when he leaves his office. He's got to go up to the corner, turn around to go home. So there's some things you have to do here.
And how many people won't have the patience to do that?
You don't have a choice.
My point is, it was never studied and where you're hanging a U-turn is a state park. And our main business district entrance, never studied, not, not studied at all. So I question whether we could, I, my real question, if you want to take your little survey is. How in the world can we approve a mitigated negative deck? After doing Norm's Hotel and the, the Malibu Bay Inn and. These other projects and making them do traffic studies that are real about Coast Highway. And then we just ignore it on this one. So I, I just don't see how we could possibly do that without.
That's a, that's a nice even-handed statement of the question. Uh, Dennis.
So we, we have a parking lot now. People are going in and out of there. When you have the motel, people are going to stay there. It's not going to be half as busy as what it is now. People coming in and out and doing everything? No way.
Craig just made the point that, that, that it's turnover three or four times a day when people go to the beach. Um, but, so the issue is. Uh, it does, does that, there's a requirement or the need to do further traffic studies. Before we, before I take straw vote, I want to open up, um. Open up Doug Burgess' mic. I know he must be dancing in frustration there.
Will you do that on every item?
Got to do it on this one. Can you open up? Yeah, Doug, you heard the, the, the remarks about the traffic study. Uh, you're listening to what's going on, I assume.
Yeah, no, we're listening to what's going on for sure. Yeah, no, and, and again. You know, looking at the, the, the traffic, looking at the, the U-turn situation. We're making it so much better than what it was, you know, uh, to Dennis's point. I mean, the, the hotel use has been studied. It to be a, a, a lot less impacted than certainly what was planned before, but that's not the case now. And then what the current use is. And again, this is where we're asking you as the commission to actually, you know, you're talking about it. But that's, that's the one thing. Your previous point that we, reason we had our hand up, it was because of the whole thing with the, the motel use. And this is strictly. A motel use, and this is exactly what was established many, many years on the other parts.
Okay, we don't want to go into that. I just had, I, I, if you had a comment about the, the adequacy of the, of the traffic studies that have been done or the.
Yes, Mr. One other point I just wanted to add, piggybacking off of what Doug just said was that. As you guys had mentioned currently right now, that parking lot might turn over three or four times. And right now people don't have a left turn to make, and it's very tight. When you enter the parking lot, there's a podium extension where the Malibu and podium sign is, and there's only one point of ingress and egress. We're creating a whole nother point of ingress and egress for cars to be able to pull in and, uh, and far improving it.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, so.
We're talking about the N M D still, right?
Yes, we are. And we're, we're specifically the traffic study. What do you think, David? Dennis, you want to, you want to send it back for additional study?
I do not.
David?
I'm, I'm, I'm torn. I don't really know what we're going to gain from an additional study that we don't kind of intuitively know here. I mean, I wish there, I wish it had been studied, but I don't know that it's defective enough to, to stop it in its tracks.
In, in the end, it might depend on what we learn or decide or figure out about the Jupa and the use on the second property and like. There's a bigger picture. We haven't looked at yet to really be definitive about the need, maybe.
Well, there's also the fact that Jeff has limited this to the traffic part of the M M D, the, the whole thing.
That's all we've talked about. Are there other issues of the M M D you want to talk about?
I've got a couple. I don't know. Do you want to finish the traffic or keep going?
I think we finished the traffic.
Okay, um, there's a section in there on greenhouse gas, and I just wanted to point out that, um. Globally, concrete production is the third greatest contributor to greenhouse gas. I think there's a lot of concrete in this. I don't know, I have no clear idea of what the requirements are statewide in terms of how big a. Project has to be to be of concern on, on the concrete, on the greenhouse gas factor. But that was, that was just omitted like, oh, we don't have to think about that and. It, it needs to, the box needs to at least be checked. And also, there, there are a lot of noise issues. Um, and I, I've come up with a lot of noise issues, especially looking at the, the, the dueling. Acoustics reports that, that sort of show up that the, the noise, uh, section of the M M D is, is not up to snuff.
Are, are we talking about, since we're not talking about any, uh, amplified music, uh. Your noise concerns have to do with what?
Well, we, we don't know the whole total of it yet. We don't, I mean, we're talking about, uh, a loud party environment right next to the preschool. We're talking about bartenders and drinks. We're talking about, we, we are still talking about music that we just can't. Uh, get into yet, but presumably that's part of the plan. So that should be looked at more seriously.
Jeff, I want to add, uh, he brought up the fact about the hubbard and the hubbard house. The top deck is where most of the noise is going to come from. You got a bar, pool. Uh, whatever else is going on up there. It's twenty feet from that house. It's the, the house is built right on the property line. They live there and it's excluded from the sound study. It's literally excluded.
But, but don't they have a, a condition that says, I don't remember the hours, it, it can't be any louder than the ambient noise. Help me out here, Richard or Adrian, than the ambient noise, uh, surrounding it. In other words, the noise can't be more than the. Traffic noise would be in the first place.
Well, the noise is cumulative and we don't have a study on that. You can't say you have. One source that's sixty decibels and one that's forty, so forget the forty, they're cumulative.
Yeah, and the neighbor Aston hired a consultant to do the noise that, to, I found more credible than the Omni Report. Likewise, I feel like that, and, and you know, Doug, if you're listening here. Uh, the, the guys that Norm hired and that Soho House hired, I forget their name offhand, but they did a pretty good job. Um, that, that, that I think would get you closer to a proper interpretation of what would be acceptable or not.
For example, on, on Norm's Hotel. We allowed him to put his restaurant on the, on the top deck. But we said, no, you have to have sound walls around it. Uh, and you can't have amplified music. In this case, it's totally open, no study, totally open, no study. Uh, and in his case. He can't even have. He can't have amplified music. And in this case, you're talking about serving meals and having a swimming pool and blah, blah, blah. And you could throw a tennis ball and land on, on the deck of the house next door easily with, with your left arm. Not in the study, not one single word, not one single diagram.
Okay, so I, I, I get your concerns about the. About the mitigated negative deck. Let's talk about the variances that, uh, have been applied for because it is. It is twenty after ten, um, and, uh. I don't want to have to continue this thing.
Can I just, can I just respond to the last point? Because I found the section just to read it. I'm not going to comment on it. Noise emanating, condition thirty-six, noise emanating from the premises shall not be plainly audible. At a distance of five feet of any residential unit between the hours of ten and seven. As required by M M C. Now, we could change that to make it, you know, earlier than the ten to seven. Ten P M to seven A M. But in any event, they did, they did without the, without the study you're talking about, they did put in a condition. I'm sorry.
And also, they also allowed serving drinks at a bar within twenty feet of ours.
And their noise study flouts the M M C code you just wrote and talks about, um. Proportional, what was the word, masking and stuff that's not part of the code and is not, doesn't, doesn't make acoustic sense.
But it, it, the, the city, the, the study doesn't make any difference if it's. A provision in the resolution that says this is what it has to be. And that provision in the resolution tracks. Section eight point twenty-four point fifty point, uh, sub L, which is in the municipal code that requires that. So, um, what difference does it make what the study said?
Well, we also have a finding that we aren't being, uh, that, 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 that they aren't getting. Favored over other approvals, okay?
That has to do with variances.
As a transition from the discussion of the M M D to the variances, I would just point out that, to me, it seems. to me, it seems the need for multiple variances, four variances plus the SPR, uh, that itself, it should be a signal that this wants a full EIR. I mean, they're just trying to put a twelve foot shoe into a a twelve foot foot into a a size twelve foot into a size ten shoe.
Well, yes, or or the other way you can look at it is because of the unique topography of this piece of property that the normal rules don't apply. For example, I think the one that's most obvious, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't require a a parking to be in the back of the building or on the side of the building because it's on the side of a hill. So the topography dictates what, whether you can require the normal compliance with the code, right? That's an example.
As pertains to variances generally, I heard the applicant several times use the word hardship. And I don't understand what that is because it seems like there are other uses of the property.
I I I I don't think hardship is a is a relevant issue in granting of variances. So I mean, I I realize they said it several times.
Yeah.
It's not part of the law.
I guess that was my point, too. Um.
Well, there's also a lot of uh general plan language about digging into hills, et cetera, and uh, uh, we we've got considerations like we have never, ever, ever allowed lifts in any building in Malibu. And all of a sudden, bunch of lifts. Uh, we we have substandard parking sizes all over. Uh, variance, uh, we have.
My understanding, John, I'm sorry, my understanding is that they 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 meet the parking requirements even without the lifts.
It's not true.
Right? Is that, is that, am I? Is that right or wrong, Richard? Am I reading this right or wrong?
That is correct. It's 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 wrong.
If only, Jeff, only if you give them, only if you give them a variance on the size of the spots. Okay, and you can look right on the diagram. It shows the 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 size of the spots.
I don't see anything about, I don't see anything in this about a variance for parking sizes or anything related to parking.
Adrian, can you clear this up or Richard?
Yeah, so uh, the other thing that I think we need to uh clear up is the fact that the Surf Rider uh motel very similar in size and and rooms uh were required the same number of parking spaces. In fact, they have one less parking spaces than the parking spaces that are being provided for this project. Um, they have the same number of employees, which is three uh listed for their projects. Uh, there's three listed here, same amenities. Uh, they have a bar, they have a a kitchen, just like they have in this project here. They're not requesting any variances for parking sizes or anything like that. The parking spaces for this project actually comply. They are a number of compact parking spaces, but the code allows those parking spaces provided they don't increase a a certain number, I believe is twenty percent of the total number of required parking spaces. They do provide uh those dimensions now. Now, the one thing that has been brought up by Commissioner Hill in uh correspondence with staff is that the need for lifts, uh, the lifts themselves have a certain dimension. And those would be, you know, encroaching or projecting uh into the parking space. And so if lifts were allowed, uh, then therefore that would essentially be a reduction in the number in the space uh allocated uh for the required parking space. And uh while that might be true, uh, the fact that uh if lifts are allowed, then that would be additional parking space than what they would be required. And in fact, they will need uh an operator to be the one to park those uh vehicles and they would be obviously, um, you know, the 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 spaces that we currently required uh wouldn't necessarily be needed if a professional um valet person is the one actually parking the vehicles.
But to the earlier point, aren't the lifts their response to our request that they consider making more public parking spaces available? And that if we said, hey, you don't have to do that, then they wouldn't do the lifts and they don't need to?
Absolutely, absolutely. So the lifts are are optional and they're not, they're they're not required to meet the minimum parking requirements based on the code.
I think we're way off on counting parking spaces because if you start over on the west on the the Malibu Inn lot, I think we said it was three employees, but we were there, there were five employees just for the retail spot, not counting anything happening if there's a restaurant. And the space there for the the seating and arrangement, there are many more spaces that that weren't counted for parking spots, including the eighteen seats in the Smiley Room, the old billiard room. So there's there's more demand coming from that lot than we're aware of. At the same time, um, on this site, the Manny Brothers counted seven staff people needed. I count ten or eleven. I can just, you need the the motel clerk. You need at least, at least two cleaners to come in each day. You need the bartender, you need the busboy slash room service gopher person. You need space for a delivery, like if there's a vending machine or the food, you need some also for maintenance or a tradesman or something always needs to be serviced. And a security guard. And uh two valets and maybe a third for the lift operator. So we're up to ten, eleven. So I think the number of spaces we've counted in this staff report doesn't reflect what would actually be needed.
We also have to realize we're giving a variance for them to park in the front yard setback. Which is not allowed on Coast Highway, you know, you have to give a variance for that. They would lose like fifteen spots if we didn't give that variance, and it's a substandard parking spot because it doesn't have the twenty-four required twenty-four uh foot uh space to drive through, which of course people have to drive through because they can't get out of there. Um, so there's a variance for parking. Right there.
You're right, and the variance is caused by the fact that there's a freaking hill right behind the building, and so you can't put the parking there.
Right, and and the general plan says, don't car, don't dig up hills. Where, and 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 this is a question I have for Adrian, uh, if we approve this, can any
Oh, God.
apartment building between or commercial building between this building and Santa Monica, dig into the hill, have a fifty-foot retaining wall and and jack up their building so they get a better view? Are we talking about hundreds and hundreds of buildings? We're talking about changing the character of Malibu? Because that's what you're arguing here. There's a cliff behind it. Well, there's eight miles of cliffs, okay, or ten, I don't know.
You never see a project that you can't make into an apocalyptic disaster.
Well, uh, Jeff, if I were as a smart guy, I'd run out and buy a dumpy apartment building on the highway, come in and ask you guys, let me put up a fifty-foot retaining wall and check it up.
Can we ask, uh, Jeff, could we ask the applicants their response to Craig's counting numbers of employees? Because ten or eleven is very different than three.
Three is.
Um, we can, if you'd like to ask uh the the uh applicants for just on this subject of the number of employees you anticipate and why it's three instead of eleven.
Yeah, the question was based on average shift. Uh, the Surf Rider has two, which which they were able to get approved on that. We did one more, the same amount of rooms. Um, knowing the hotel the way it is, or the motel, excuse me, that's that's what they were working on. This person at the front desk, this person on the roof. And there was somebody in the kitchen, the 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 uh counting, the uh housekeeping cap was not part of that count. And um and nor is everything with self-parking, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the numbers that that we were basing off of, and um it was not an issue there, and we don't think it's an issue here.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
You you check in, you probably check out at ten and you check in at two, something like that. And so you've got the shift where everybody switches and everybody needs a new bed. And you're saying that three people are going to change all the beds, cook, cook lunch, check everybody in, check everybody out uh with three people, including the 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 busboy.
Yeah, and again, the the way the code is stating is average shifts. And again, it's it's just based on the amount of people and and even it, you know, the full occupancy or even if there's three people at the hotel. And again, this is something that's that's just been established and you could start to name all sorts of people, but this is the way we created it and we felt that uh having one more than the Surf Rider was going to help uh this the situation now. And also to answer that other question, there was the additional parking that's provided that we have to provide for the adjacent uh space, too. And that uh employees is is not included because we didn't even count all those spaces that are over on the other property.
Okay, I just want to point out to people that we approved something like eleven employees for Nobu and there's a hundred and twenty in one shift. So when you start drinking the Kool-Aid, you really screw things up.
I I just wanted to go ahead with what John went to a minute ago about grading and cutting into the hill. This, because this is one of the things that's hanging me up a lot, LIP eight point three point E, the design of the grading. Um, there's a lot of language here about minimizing the alterna alteration of landforms and specifically eliminating flat building pads on slopes. Building pads shall utilize split level or stepped pad designs to notch development into hillsides. The project, this project is on a flat pad and distinctly does not use any sort of split level or stepped pad design to notch into the hillside. Now, it looks stepped from the front, but this code is about grading and the interface with the terrain. And just the whole notion of building that one flat pad with a fifty-some foot retaining wall on the backside, that to me just says, just screams, this is exactly what this co piece of code is telling us not to do.
Well.
When the code was written as all of these codes, it had to kind of visualize the entire stretch of Malibu. And just as in subsequently in LA County and so forth, what they were worried about is people bulldozing off the tops of mountains and cutting flat ta pads into hillsides uh and and altering the terrain form. This does alter the terrain form, but on the other hand, back in those days when we were talking about this, the idea of 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 directing the 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 project back into the hillside was something which thought was desirable. It was it was preferable to having it stand out uh against the skyline. The idea of notching projects into the hillside was, yeah, that's a good idea. Uh, so I guess it depends on where you're coming from.
Well, well, yeah, definitely notching, but I think this is what this is getting at has something to do with things like geological stability and so forth. And it seems to me like if we if we were to go against the specific code here so directly, that may raise liability issues uh to approve something this.
I don't know. I I I I don't think that there's any liability issues that that are even potentially resolvable.
Well, I mean, I I don't think in a courtroom, I don't think this would pass the foreseeability test. They go, of course, you shouldn't have tried putting a fifty-five foot retaining wall there on a on a Malibu bluff.
It's sliding.
I mean.
Okay, okay, lawyers.
I just, I just want to say, you're talking about a thirty-year-old conversation that was never codified. So you know, things change, but I I just want to look at the real life facts here. Uh, and this has to do with grading and notching into the hill. If you look on page thirteen or forty-seven, they give you the side view of the hotel, okay? It it's got a fifteen-foot separation between the building and the retaining.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's not notching. That's all having building a retaining wall to allow you to build what looks like here to me, a three-story building, okay? And then you show right on the diagram that that's forty-six feet from uh finished grade, and it's got a line.
Uh, okay, so you're back with the major, you're back with the measuring thing where we started this thing off. It's that, it's that dash line indicating existing natural grade that that gives.
If you want to look at that, no, it's not, because if you look above that, you'll see the dash line.
I'm I'm looking at it right now. I can see the dash line indicates existing natural grade. I can read it.
I know, and if you look and that's exactly where the wall ends, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you look behind that, you look behind the wall towards the.
I see that. I see that space, yes.
That's all been graded out.
Yes.
Okay, that's not, has nothing to do with the 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 height. And then you look the fifteen feet in between, which I really doubt has been counted in this supposed ten or fifteen percent of the grading that isn't under structure. And you you go all the way down to the garage, you obviously couldn't have poured the garage floor, I mean, ceiling. Obviously couldn't have done that without removing the dirt, and it actually says fill. Okay, so they grade it out. And then say, oops, we only want to measure twenty-one feet, so we throw some dirt in there. That's not cool.
I I don't think that's where it's measuring from, John, honestly.
Yes, it is. You look at the left of that, it says twenty-one point eleven feet, and that's how they count. But from the elevator, it's in the staff report. Okay, if you measure from the the floor, the first floor room, if you even call that the first floor, it's way over twenty-four feet.
Okay, we we had.
But my other question is, when we look at grading, you have, you you're calling this this supposed underground garage. Underground. What did you do? You took, there was no dirt in front of it. Because that's where the story poles show there's no dirt. It's a parking lot. And you piled dirt on top of it. In the back of it, you piled dirt on top of the roof. And then you say it's underground. It also exceeds the footprint of the building above.
Uh huh.
Okay, so you got to count all that grading. We're not counting it. You have to count all the grading that's taken away from natural grade. And then you have to realize that that wall, that fifty-six-foot wall is built on one-to-one. We cannot cannot approve a one-to-one variance. And if you look on the.
That's what retain, that's how retaining walls are built.
Not on one-to-one walls, not on one-to-one slopes.
Well, Dennis has his hand up on that, I think.
All right, Dennis.
So you guys remember when you go to Mr. Haney's building, you drive up the driveway and you drive around the backside of the building, what do you see on your left-hand side? You see a wall holding up the slope.
That would not be le, would not be legal now.
And it's also not fifty-six feet.
It's big, Commissioner Mazda. This point being is, it's the same thing.
The point being is the code exempted it because it was done prior to nineteen ninety-three. He could not do it today. And we can't say, we always say, oh, gee, they did that back in, you know, nineteen sixty. It doesn't count.
It's because it's gotten even better now. Much better.
When the limitation on 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 retaining wall height was put in, it was entirely an aesthetic determination. It was because you didn't want to have people staring at these big, high retaining walls uh up on the side of a hill. We went through that the other night when we were talking about.
Where does the code say that?
It doesn't say it. It's just that's, I I was there when it was written. I know what it's, what it was, the reason why it was there.
Thirty years ago, you had a discussion. That that doesn't cut it.
And I'm just saying that it, okay, it doesn't count. That's why I don't feel uncomfortable granting a variance because I know why the rule was put in place in the first place. It was an aesthetic determination. This is going to be hidden behind the building, so the aesthetics don't count anymore. So I ha I have less difficulty in granting a variance to allow it than I would say if it were for fifty-six feet standing out in the middle of nowhere.
Even if our codes limit us to two to twelve feet, two sixes, we want, we get to go three times that big with one wall instead of two. We don't even allow a twenty-four-foot wall now.
For the reasons.
They have two sixes.
For the reasons I just, for the reasons I just stated, yes, that's that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so we can just ignore the code.
Oh, you can't, but you can grant variances.
Well, the other thing I want to point out is this is a three-story building. When we heard, when we heard the parking lot, the parking lot. When we heard, when we heard the parking lot, the parking lot discussion for having parking lots. Joyce, I mean, not Joyce, uh, Bonnie said, can't have it over two stories. It's it's a parking lot, but it can't be over two stories. Here we put a little bit of dirt in front of it, and we say, oh, it doesn't count. It's a.
Ask staff about the analysis of how they how they decided it wasn't a three story building. Adrian.
Okay, so um, there is a basement, again, based on staff's interpretation, the. Garage qualifies as a subterranean garage, and so as a result, um, it is not. Counted as a as a as a floor or level um based on the definition. And then you have two floors above that. So this is a two story building with a subterranean garage based on staff's interpretation.
Okay, now let me ask you this, if you could, if you.
John, let me jump in here for a sec. Let me jump in for a sec. Notwithstanding, wh- whether that's acceptable or not, on the site plan review. We have discretion to go up to twenty eight feet maximum, maximum. And this is even by the most charitable interpretation of how high this is, it's forty feet to the top of the railing. And another, if you want to count the the elevator shaft compartment, that's we're up to forty nine or fifty feet, so. And plus, we're not even talking about a sound wall that we might need at the back ultimately, or the debris retaining wall up the hill, which. You know, sort of conveys the whole urbanization there halfway up that hill. So. But I I think you just, you, a a minute ago, you just said, we don't want to see big retaining walls, and we're talking about a retaining wall up there. So I guess my point is. Our discretion with the site plan review takes us up to twenty eight feet. How do we even go beyond that to say, oh, yeah, this is fine?
It it depends on where you start the measurement from, and that's the that's the explanation that Adrian gave you at the doubts. When we first started this whole thing, when we're talking about the height. Adrian?
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask you to do it again.
Yeah, the forty foot dimension that has been uh referenced by both Commissioner Mazza and Commissioner Hill. Is a measurement from the uh finished floor elevation of the garage. Again.
Which is also, it it's no, it's a measurement from the finished, the existing. Flat ground now of the parking lot. Which you're then building on top of and putting burns in front of, and I mean, to my mind, that burn. I don't buy, I don't buy the argument the subterranean. I just don't.
Okay, but but let him actually make the argument. Okay, let him, let him tell you why, where he measures from in order to allow. The site plan review to to approve the building.
Yeah, so so forty feet again would be from the garage. Uh, the. The driveway, in fact, uh, as um. Uh, Doug Doug Birch mentioned is about six feet higher. Uh, P C H is at the twenty foot elevation, which will be equal to the elevation of the garage. So there is a difference in grade. Um, you do, uh, it it might not be uh perceivable, but there is definitely a a difference in grade between P C H and. Um, you know, the the end of the garage before the building starts. Now, again, measuring heights from one elevation. Uh, would be misleading because. That one elevation, the south um elevation in this case is. Uh, basically what the requirement would be for properties that are, you know, residential properties. That are built on hillside and where the code requires a dimension from the lowest. Uh, low point of the building to the highest high part of the building, not to exceed a total of thirty five feet. Well, that requirement doesn't apply here uh for this commercial development. The height is measured in two fashions. Uh, the first one is based on natural grade, and so what we do for that is we ask the applicant to provide. The um roof plant and superimpose the topography on top of that, and then we do a comparison. Between all the different elements of the roof, elevations, and then compare that to. The existing grade, and if there are any portions of the building that exceed the height. Then we ask for them to revise the project. So that's one. One uh way of measuring height. The second way of measuring height based on the code is. Uh, we measured um uh based on finished grade at the perimeter of exterior walls. And so because uh what we're looking at is a cross section, we're not actually looking at what the. Uh, finished grade is at the perimeter of these of the building, which is obviously much higher. Uh, than the um grades that you see from uh the cross section, which is a slide uh across the building. And so from uh perimeter grades, uh, we have asked the applicant to provide a series of cross sections. Across the entire building and we've asked them to connect the lines. Um, from the adjacent finished grades and then project those lines. Uh, the the maximum allowed height, which in this case would be twenty four feet. And then again, if any portion of the building projects above that height, then we would have asked them to uh revise the height. Um, now, uh, based on that information, uh, we were able to. Uh, determine that this project actually meets the height requirement.
Well, how do you, I mean, Adrian, how do you justify the fact that when you look at the diagram? You say. You took the the. Garage. Which you said was underground, but in reality, the only reason you're calling it underground is that they dumped a bunch of dirt on top of.
Altering the landform.
They did not cut it away. And leave the dirt. They took the dirt out. They graded it out. Pour the cement and then pile a pile of dirt on top of it so they could stand on the pile of dirt and measure. The the exterior of that building, when it's constructed. Doesn't have that dirt there. Okay?
Again, measuring from both natural grade and finished grade at perimeter exterior walls.
Okay.
So sim- simply adding dirt uh around the building. Doesn't really provide any benefits in terms of measuring height because height is still measured from. Natural grade, which would be lower. Now, it does. It does benefit in terms of making the basement comply with the basement rule in that. The basement exterior walls are not allowed to daylight more than three feet, and so they were. Birmingham those exterior walls in order to comply with the basement.
I I'm talking about the rear of the building. The basement was made poured in cement above ground. It connects to the retaining wall. And it's too high because because it measured too high there, so. What they did is they filled it with dirt. It's not natural grade. It's it's it was brought in and poured on there after the building was built. Okay, and.
They, John, Adrian, I, the point he, what he's talking about is on uh the diagram, figure three on three of thirteen of forty seven. Uh, above the garage, there's that shaded area that said fill and soil. I think that's what John is.
Exactly, and you're saying it it it's it's all around the building. Well, that part of the building, the building is a lot more than twenty four feet. So can I go out and 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 take my garage and put a pile of dirt on it and color the seller? You know, I mean, there's a point at which.
I think.
You know, you're playing games. You're playing games.
I think the answer to that is, yes, we've we've seen that a lot with other uh residential projects. Now. Again, uh, when we talk about finished grade, uh, we never measure. Height from basements. The basements, if they're subterranean. Um, then we don't measure height from there.
I'm not talking about the basement.
I understand. So now there's dirt pile on top of that portion of the basement. Um, now. Uh, there's two forms of measuring height, like I said before. The second one is. Uh, from finished grade at perimeter of walls. It doesn't say anything about whether the grade has to be natural. In fact. Most construction projects require a lot of grading uh for uh removal and recompaction. In order to stabilize the slope, so the the soil that is put. On properties where the height of buildings is measured is typically not the same soil there that was. That was there before the project is usually placed there as a result of the project. In this case, again, they put soil there. Which lifts the finished grade at that particular location, and now you are measuring the height from that location.
Okay, so, so let me, let me just point one thing out. Uh, if you've piled the dirt all the way up to the top of the elevator, would you say that building was zero height?
I'd say that one more time.
If you took that dirt and piled it up another twenty feet. Would you measure from there and say it's ten or twelve feet high?
Uh, well, we're measuring at all um portions of the exterior walls, and so if that happened to be taller, but on the sides is still low enough. We would be measuring the height from the from the sides as well, and that wouldn't necessarily result in a higher building.
You don't get the choice to measure it only on one side.
That's what I said, you don't.
Well, so, so that's over twenty four feet. I mean, you could make it one foot if you want to pile a bunch more dirt in there, but it's not natural. And and it's it's, there's a point at which you can say, and by the way, it's the lower of of the natural or finished grade, it's not the higher of.
Exactly. Can I, can I just interject here? I mean, I don't expect you to see the detail here, but on A A two point one, this view. You have finished or natural, whatever you want to call it, on three sides of the building, at the pocket sliding doors, at the the garage entrance. Where the, on on the east side where the stairs come down, that's that's the grade, whether you call it natural or finished. It's that point, it's not. It's not with the with the dirt and planters piled up against the sides of the building.
Well, and 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 that goes back to Commissioner Mazza's point is that you don't measure height from just one elevation because again. That would never allow development to be developed on hillsides because you would be. Using the elevation at the uh lowest grade and then uh measuring the height uh of the rest of the building from that location, and that's not how. The code was written. Again, the code allows for it to be measured from exterior walls, which. The way um that we've been applying that is by creating a plane, and that plane is. Created by providing these different cross sections and connecting the exterior wall lines. In order to more accurately represent uh what the the height of the the building would be.
But but if you're talking about perimeter walls, this is that baseline plane that I'm talking about appears on three sides of the building.
The elevations on the garage uh entrance, they also. Um, elevated the the um the grade on top of the entrance, and then on the opposite side, they did the same. So the grades. On the east and the west of this building are much higher than the front elevation grade. Um. So that's why the height of this building was able.
It still puts us way over the twenty eight feet that we're allowed to.
Let me ask you this, uh. If you made a bigger pile. Could you have a building that was? In actual fact, like seventy feet above. Roadway, uh, the the line you drew as as your finished grade. Uh, or eighty feet and have a two or three story garage just because you piled more dirt in front of it? And and my, that's a question for you. My question for Jeff is. Back in the days, did you consider? Uh, how high you can make a building by piling dirt against it? And and wasn't bulk and mass a big deal?
Please, John, well, I'll let Adrian answer the question.
So, um, because we're measuring in two different ways. The height of the building would never be higher than twenty eight feet from existing grade. So. Um, we're we're never going to be able to see a seventy foot tall building. Um, because grade will still be measured from the existing grade. Um, and then, and then we are using both, so in in other words, it's always going to be either twenty eight feet or twenty four feet from natural grade. Or in fact, lower, um, with the finished grade slightly lower for that to be than. Um, where the uh control point would be for height measurement.
Well, the retaining wall is at seventy feet, which means you could have ninety four foot high building.
So just to answer your question, John, uh, the 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 process of writing. Stuff down about, you know, we don't want three story buildings and we don't want. Uh, anything higher than eighteen feet, uh, unless it has a site plan review. All of those things were easy to say because because they were done in a kind of a. Uh, a vacuum. It was all done in an abstract way. As soon as. As soon as we started getting projects, and you you've been there, you, as soon as we started getting projects that were built in hillsides, on the sides of canyons, looking down. Then the whole issue became, how are we going to deal with this? For example, a a a project that steps back and steps back and steps back. You know, are you going to measure, is it, is it, is it a two story building or is it a three story building because it starts over here? All of those things had to be. Had to evolve in a sense, and and, yeah, you know, there, in in many ways. The evolution was was not that great, because if you step back a building and step back a building and step back a building. You're only, you know, you're still a one story building all the way down, but if you look at it from the front, you've got a huge monolith sitting there. So, yeah, there there have been. It it has been a long involved process to figure out how are we going to measure these things, including the heights of building. And I know that you guys don't agree with the with the the way it's evolved, and the staff has come up, but this is not. The stuff that that Adrian is saying is not new. This stuff has evolved over the years, and this is the way we're going to have to do it. Because there's no other way to do it. And.
It is.
And and, you know, there are always other ways to do it, and you guys are ingenious in coming up with what, no, no, you can't, you're not doing it the right way. You need to do it this other way. But it's the way he started describing it being done is the way it's, the way it has evolved. A long time ago. I mean, this is not new stuff that.
This is brand new. There's no commercial building in Malibu that's fifty, forty six, seventy, seventy feet high, fifty six feet high, none, zero.
I proved, I'm not sure what, but.
Okay, and and we 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 make.
We don't build.
Very harebrained things like deciding that a lot is more than a hundred percent, so we can have a green wall. Yeah. You guys passed it in the city council, it became it, but. To city that that anywhere was kind with. Our rules about notching up a hill always followed the maximum height lower of. Finished or 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 natural. This one doesn't. This one digs a giant hole in the ground.
Okay, I I I've I've got your point. We're now at eleven o'clock, guys.
I'll make.
I I I consider.
Just a second, just a second. We're we're now at eleven o'clock. We've got a lot of issues, I think, with regard to this other project that we should have considered, but it's now eleven o'clock. Uh, you had your hand up, Greg, you had a suggestion for how.
Yeah, I I was gonna make a a con- a motion to continue with a request for, and we could make a a list of of. Things that we think we need more information on prior to the next meeting.
I'll second that because we always make huge mistakes after eleven and we're never going to finish this before two.
Well, we 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 aren't going to finish them both. Um, I've, um, I have. Um, certainly, I think we're going to have to continue it. As far as. Uh, I I've 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 seen your lists that you guys come up with additional information. I'm not sure I'm going to support that, but um. Let's, let let me ask staff, let me ask Richard, uh. How how the the least disruptive way we can try to resolve this, because I, you know, e- even if we passed it now. Uh, it was going to have to be conditional on on getting approval of the um. The uh adjoining properties. Yeah, which you warned us against, but okay, um, then we are, here we are, where we are. Um. And uh, so is there a date that that you think that we could be given? Um.
Certainly, I'm looking, I'm bringing up my agenda calendar now.
Can I just add one thing while he's looking? I think it's very important that we get regional water board clearance. And we should factor that in there since they were never asked.
I'll tell you what, why don't you make a list, and if you've got three votes for them, we can. We can add up to the thing that you're going to.
Let's get a date. Well, does the date depend on what the list is?
Well, it might, but I uh I'm going to make the list kind of short if if I have three votes to do that, so um.
I would like, I would like, and we can vote on each one if we want, um. I would like. Some written. Uh, agreement by the regional water board. That we're not filing the M O U by taking. that we're not violating the MOU by taking the water use up to whatever it was, five thousand gallons a day or.
Right, I got it.
Is that acceptable?
No, what else?
I, I would like a, at least a preliminary ingress egress highway traffic study from Cross Creek to, to, to uh, say uh, the Malibu Bay Company as far as access. We should have some information.
We do. You turn right.
Oh, God. This has got to be reviewed by two more bodies, guys. Not just us.
Thank God. Um, anything else?
Yeah, I, I have a concern that I should air now before it get, you know, drags further, which is regarding the calculation of the FAR. There's a couple of questions here, one being that the tax assessor reports the lot size as being exactly three thousand square feet less than the applicant and staff has measured. That, we need to figure out why that is, and if you use the net lot size for calculating FAR, then that would be problematic for the developer. And also with respect to the FAR, there are several areas that are clearly one-to-one area uh, that are supposed to be subtracted from the uh, the the gross lot size for the net lot size. I know Adrian has a, a different point of view about that, but looking at the MMC seventeen forty oh eight zero two D, for the purpose of calculating yards, slopes equal or greater than one point one shall not be included in the lot dimensions. That's in the commercial building standards. Um, and so that, the whole FAR thing, I think that needs some review.
Commissioner Hill was saying, almost all the way back to Agoura and the hillside. You, you can't even hardly see it when you drive by. What, what are you after here? I don't get that.
You can't violate FAR provisions. That's, that's a golden rule in, in Malibu.
I'm after following the code and fairness.
Commissioner Hill, are you saying that the FAR calculation um, here, because you mentioned setbacks in there. Are, are we blending the two, or because to, to me, they're, they're two separate items. Your FAR.
No, no, no concern about setbacks whatsoever.
We're just talking about the total development square footage based upon the FAR calculation, which, which is sort of the first thing that an architect does, but.
Yeah, yeah, but, but so one question is why does the tax assessor report three thousand square feet less?
And why does the, why does the surveyor certify that there's twenty-nine hundred and eighty-four square feet or so of one-to-one slope stamped by their surveyors?
Well, the surveyor also determined the size of the lot, but.
Well, that, that's actually what I was going to say. We're not going to base our FAR numbers as a staff on something from the tax rolls. That would be irresponsible of this department. We need to be basing our numbers on what stamp surveys.
And you have one that says you have one-to-one, and they subtracted from it, and they come up with the net lot size. It's in your staff report. It's the color-coded slope analysis stamped by a surveyor, paid for by the applicant.
Those red areas need to be subtracted. So.
The other, the other point about red areas I would like to have an answer on is the, the retaining wall on both ends of it is built on a one-to-one slope, and we're not allowed to approve structures on one-to-one slopes.
Okay, so um, let's, let's the FAR discussion and the, and the one-to-one slope and how it factors in is something that we can, we can try to get uh, uh, an answer on from staff uh, as we move forward with another date, which Richard was going to give us.
So, depending on the nature of the, the, what we're bringing back here, um, it would range from to a day, I mean, like I said, this depends on how much information is needed. If it's fairly limited scope, I think that we would be well-prepared for the first meeting in November.
Okay, um, then all the, uh, I, let's, let's see if there are other things that people want to uh, put forward. I, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm happy to have a discussion of the FAR, although why that couldn't happen just between individual commissioners and staff members between now and the time of the meeting is beyond me, but if it needs to be done in public, it can be done in public. What else in the way of information do you want to have brought back?
I, I would like to see clarification on the geology, because we have new data as of twenty twenty after the study talking about the, the potential uh, strength of quakes on the Malibu Coast Fault. There's an article in the, in the Malibu Times, and in combination with the fact that, and I, I think I sent this to staff, yeah, I sent that, the, the coast faults um, sections are, there's one, a couple hundred feet up above here, and there's one right out in the ocean here. I don't know, you know, if those, if those were thought to be capable of a four or five quake, and now they're thought to be capable of a six or a seven, that's maybe something that, that should be just, you know.
The project geologist is a very qualified individual, and we aren't.
But, but, and my point is, he hasn't looked at it since this, this new stuff came out from USGS, so.
Uh, he probably, uh, so I, no, I'm not going to support that. Anything else?
I'd like to uh, at least have the the Habad and the school included in the sound study.
Yeah.
Everybody else is including.
What, what?
It's, it, it, exactly seventy feet is the house where they have the school and the guy lives at the Habad, and, and below it, directly next door to the hotel is a church. And so I'd like to have the sound study at least include those. They're, they're right there. They're
I, I, yeah.
Away.
And also on the sound study, I think Aston's consultant uh, did a better job of characterizing the, the way masking works and doesn't work, and I, I think that needs to be folded into the.
Aren't, aren't we talking about, that, that, we're talking about the sound study? Aren't we talking about it sound for, for amplified music?
No, just sound.
Just sound, that's because.
They got, no, it's not amplified music. They have a bar.
Aren't, aren't there conditions? And the, the conditions that it can't be audible more than five feet from the property line, or from the property, adjoining property. I think.
Any noise. It's not music. It just is noise.
Any noise.
Okay, so to clarify.
Bar and a, and a, and a swimming pool.
Any noise, any noise.
So to clarify, you're saying we're, we're sticking with the city code on noise. We are not adopting any of the uh, framing that provided to us by the applicant.
I'm not, that, 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 that information has not even been analyzed by staff. So as far as I'm concerned, we're sticking with. So, anything else that you guys want to be, have brought back?
Well, I'd like, I'd like a staff analysis of the rationality of three people running that place.
Yeah.
I don't, we would need some further direction. That, that's beyond the scope of the department.
Well, you can count and, and, and you gotta, you got a bartender, you got a cook, you got somebody to clean the rooms, and you got a desk clerk. That's more than three, right there.
And two or three valets.
What we can do is.
Sorry, Richard. The, the code does say uh, on average, on average per shift, and that's, that's what they're using. So there could be you know, uh, more people in the afternoons uh, or in the evenings than there are in the mornings, as long as per average, they have three or less. That's the requirement. Now, we also have talked about the valet. Valet would only be necessary if the lift uh, spaces are required, in which case there would be more than plenty of parking spaces to account for the valet person to park there. Uh, but.
Yeah, but you, you, you got to realize that you're, you, you have to actually analyze it. If you have a bar open until two in the morning, that's a shift. You don't have somebody from seven to two. Okay?
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to move that uh, we continue this item and forcey uh, to be brought back on November one uh, with uh, with staff to explain uh, either preferably with a staff in, in a supplement of the staff report, they, the, the FAR calculation and how it is, what it is. Um, but, but um, so that's my motion. Do I get a second on that?
Nothing else?
That, nothing else that you've come up with so far?
Yeah, I'd second it.
I'd like a chicken sandwich.
Okay, uh, moved and seconded. Is there anything else you want to offer as something that needs to be studied further?
Well, I think, I think we are obligated to do the traffic study. We're obligated to do that. It's part of an MND. We've required every other commercial building in that area, we've approved. We've turned down projects because of it, and we don't have one as far as traffic.
Okay, that's my motion.
We don't want to know that.
That's my motion.
I'd like to know what the threshold is for concrete use with respect to the greenhouse.
Really?
Requirement. Uh, I, I don't know. It, does it, does it, does it come into question with one house or with a?
You know, I, I don't know, but I am sure that the rules are very clearly spelled out in codes that we have nothing to deal with, nothing to do with. Um, it's, you know, it's interesting, and it's, you know, but it's not something that we deal with. It's like all the other codes that we don't deal with.
It's one of the categories of the MND.
Uh, yeah.
Can, can we not, can you not accept the fact that we need to know if the regional board is going to approve this?
Um, yeah, I, I can't.
You guys, you don't realize that.
I know, every decision we make is apocalypse, but we have to move on. It's eleven fifteen. That's my motion. Do we take?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I'll second it.
I thought I did already.
Yeah, he did, he did.
So to be clear, the motion is to return on November first with additional information on the floor area ratio calculation.
That's correct. And for both of those items, and, and God knows what we're going to have to deal with when we get to the other, to the aviation nation stuff. Um, okay, so those are my, those are, that's my motion. Uh, can you call the roll, please, Patricia?
Yes. Chair Jenny.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Martha.
Absolutely no way.
No, the, the motion is to continue it.
The motion is to continue without asking for additional information. I cannot vote for that.
Oh, I thought we, we just had a list of things that we.
Oh, Jeff, next to them all.
Oh, next to them all?
Oh, one.
You want to change, you want to change your vote, Craig?
Yeah.
Okay, you can go no.
I'm voting no then. I, I, I thought we were going to get some of that extra stuff.
No.
Noted. So for Commissioner Hill, no. Commissioner Martha, no. Commissioner Smith?
Absolutely positively yes.
Motion carried.
All right, let's get a motion to adjourn.
Please, I motion me adjourn.
Wait, excuse me, do we need to continue the aviation nation parking?
Uh, that was, I'm sorry, the, the motion was to continue both of them.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
David Booth, Dennis, seconds. Uh, call the roll, please.
Uh, Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wild.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Martha.
I'm staying.
Chair Jenny.
Yes.
Motion carried.
John, I'm looking forward to the apartment complexes. You're going to be building down the highway that you mentioned.
No, the, you, you, no, that'll be Don Schmitz and a hundred other people.
Yeah, there won't be any room for that, because the, the whole thing is going to be leveled over for riding rinks.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we'll call, no, why don't we just call this a riding rink, and then the whole thing can be built on?
Thank you all.
Bye.